All right. Why don't we call meeting to order and stamp for pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for accommodating us at an early meeting, for the sake of the blowers. First order of business is public comment. Anyone like to make public comment? Hi.
Lynn Rigwood, 393 Tremont. Following up on my email last night, last week, just so everyone who's here, the video, just commenting on the fact that five percent of the 95% in the schools of that made it five percent, 40% picked the kids, I'm not sure, Cannon Plantocallis in Massachusetts. We have an equity audit. I want somebody to explain to me how that's equitable and it's out in the room and no one wants to talk about it. And it's just disturbing, absolutely disturbing. No one stands up for the kids. I'm gonna stand up for all them. And then just hear about more injuries and you're running morbid. And I just think we have to have a conversation in the school about the fact that the house guidance function when they can't. My son is a senior, Cannon Plantocallis in Massachusetts. No one has a problem with that. So I'm sorry, nobody wants to discuss it. No one wants to acknowledge it. People don't realize it. Their daughter's always wanted to play division one hockey. She can't go to any of the schools that she wants to go. But what's fair about that? And everyone doesn't say anything. So just repeating it out loud and I just, if anybody in this community brings me, be gone, because I make phone calls all the time and people in the other end are always horrified when they hear the truth. So my mom, my mom. If somebody decides maybe to speak about the fact that kids can't go to college in this state and we got an equity audit, we paid money for that equity audit. And we ignore that whole room. Everyone knows where it's going.
Thanks, Mr. Ringwood. Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Okay, so next item is to approve the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the October 3rd, 2022 school committee meeting minutes, please? That's, these are second.
Second.
Right. Any discussion, questions on the minutes?
I just have one. In reference to the policy that about this funding that I brought up on in minutes, it sorry, I had a thought of that. But it states that we are in, our policies are in alignment with our practice, but that's not what we discussed in the meeting is that we have a policy that doesn't align with what we do with schools. And then I further, anyway, I write the code of conduct and it doesn't match what that policy says either. So I just, we add that in that so for student discipline says feels comfortable with the current policy stating that the policy is consistent with our current practices, but I don't think that's what we discussed in the meeting. I just think we, I have it written down here, I just think your concerns about your objections to it just need to be documented somehow.
Do you need clarification on what to put in or do you have enough, give any little bit of clarification? So.
Just that that sentence says that we, as the meeting, we discussed that our policies are in alignment with our practice, but it says that the policy is consistent. I think what we concluded is the policy is not consistent with our that's what we're considering as well. So. Yes. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Any other items on the minutes? Anything you have? Well, okay. So we ready to vote? Motion to, the question is to approve the October 3rd, 2022 school meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Hi.
Sorry, no, you're right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So the motion is to approve the October 3rd, 2022 school committee meeting minutes with the revision from this theory.
I second.
No, I think we just. Okay, vote, it's unanimous for zero. I should also just say, this is for us to handle. Okay, thanks. Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, it's mid-fall. That means the pumpkin spice reports are here. Dr. Klingerman, start with you, superintendent.
Sure. Hi, everyone. I have just a few brief comments this evening. Matt had asked me just to give everyone an update about the strategic plan, final document, and I just wanted to share that we are working on having the published copy prepared where we have some demographic information about the school district, some MCAS scores, and just some background information about enrollment. And so that's currently in, happening right now. And so we should have the final copy that can be posted on the website and disseminated. And we hope to be able to do a bit of the strategic plan shareout when we have the budget meeting on November 2nd. Once we have that, we usually visit the school councils and PTA meetings. So we were hoping to be able to do the budget and the strategic plan shareout with parents and community members at that time. So that will be coming up and we'll make sure that the website is updated. And just to give a brief update about the special education director, I know that the CPAC met last night and had a really productive meeting, which is great to hear. So right now, this week, we had the position as of interim special education director posted for two weeks, and we did have a few candidates that we reached out to across the state. So we've been asking around if there's any recently retired special education directors that were just itching to get back to work. And so we've had some interviews and we can be pretty convincing to come work in Duxbury. So what we're trying to do is figure out if there's, if we can look at our internal special education staff to see if there's opportunity for us to put an interim in place with a current employee and to be able to support any backfilling of that position. So we've been speaking to a couple of candidates that seem like they have great experience and some availability to work with us. And so I'm hoping that by the end of this week, beginning of next week, we'll be able to secure them. So I have contracts developed where we can come to an agreement about what they, what these candidates would be able to do for us, whether they come in as a consultant to be able to support some of our programs, or whether they're coming in as a full-time employee. But I'll have an update in the, in the, in the next week. But in the meantime, I think it's really important to note that it's only been a couple of days that we haven't had a director in person in district. And I think that we have wonderful team chairs that have stepped up and are willing to do so in the interim until we have someone secured to be able to be in that position. And so if parents are wondering who to reach out to, it's always your special education liaisons or your team chair. And as I shared in my message last Friday with the community, if, if anyone else is concerned about who they might contact with a question and they don't have a liaison or a team chair, they can reach out to me or any of us at central office, Dr. Wilcox or Mr. Katie. So just, please don't, if anyone asks about anything, have them not wait and we'll be able to answer any questions, but we, we feel like we'll be able to button this up pretty soon. And that's all from me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening. On September 20th, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education amended special education regulations to add an early literacy screening requirement. The regulation does go into effect on July 1st of 2023. According to the regulation, each district shall have at least twice per year assess each student's reading skills and abilities from kindergarten through at least third grade. Duxbury currently is doing this, so we are in good shape. We are using appropriate screening instruments that have been approved by DESI. We currently use a combination of assessments in what I ready, and I ready is approved by DESI under partially meeting category, which is why we have a combination of assessments that we use, because we use multiple indicators when we're looking at the early literacy data. So that's oral reading fluency, our nonsense words, phonemic awareness, phonemic segmentation. So those are all parts of the early literacy screening requirement, and we are currently following in alignment with those regulations. We, do you have?
I do. Would the dyslexia screening fall under that? So that's a part of that, yes. And those tests are?
So that's all part of the, the beginning of the year at Chandler. So it depends on which grade level you're in. So in kindergarten, we, we try not to assess students right away, but certainly with our first and second graders, we're taking a look at what their early literacy skills are that is developmentally appropriate. For example, in second grade, oral reading fluency would be something that we're measuring. But in first grade, we would be doing other indicators such as phoneme segmentation or our nonsense word fluency. So taking a look at three different letters that are not typically a word and then seeing how a student sounds that out. So those are parts of all of those assessments. And so each grade level, though, has different subtests as appropriate for a student's developmental ability as they're beginning to learn to read. I will say with reading, it's all different for each child. And so it does take some time, but those subtests do help us to indicate which areas students may need additional support in.
And who does the testing?
So I believe it's a combination of the teachers at the different schools. But as, and I believe that it's conducted by the reading specialist in addition to some of, for example, curriculum supervisors also involved, but
Classroom teachers also.
Also has a part in that as well.
Great.
For, are there any other questions about the early literacy screening?
This year, you might anticipate that parents will receive far more information about those screen checks. So like actual data regarding proficiency, verbal confidence, such that wasn't something that's been previously.
Right. So previously, we did not send home the I Ready parent report. However, this year, we have implemented I Ready as our assessment at Alden. So we are using it at Chandler and Alden, and we will be sending home parent reports. And then our curriculum supervisors will also be hosting coffee hours for any parent who wants additional information on how to interpret the results. So the parent report will have information about how to read it and what are next steps. But the curriculum supervisors will also be hosting some time for you, for parents, to be able to come in and to hear more information about it as well. You're welcome. We also, just sharing that the MCAS results were mailed home to families this week. So those are in the mail and will arrive this week. I also wanted to share that our district is undergoing tiered focus monitoring, the TFM review, which every school district is reviewed every three years through the tiered focus monitoring. Their review process emphasizes elements tied to student outcomes. In this year, we are going through the Group B, Group B universal standards. And those include licensure and professional development, parent-student community engagement, facilities and classroom observations, time and learning, equal access. And so what happens during this review process is that there is a member from DESI who will audit our materials. So our documents, our processes, they will ask for additional information. We have provided the initial submission of our documents and policies. And then what happens is that person who is working with us will then meet with us and provide us feedback on ways that we can improve so that we have time before the final submission in December to make any changes or revisions to some of our policies or practices. So that's an ongoing process that's happening now. And I'll speak more to a policy later in the meeting that is involved as part of that process. We also have the plea equity audit, which is occurring. We have our focus groups had taken place last week. And the first collaborative stakeholder group meeting was yesterday. We will have three additional collaborative stakeholder group meetings. Two will be virtual and then we'll have the final one in person as well. And my last update is Care Solace. Care Solace, Duxbury Public Schools is working to engage in a partnership with Care Solace. It is an organization that provides care coordination, connecting students and families with mental health care providers. This is a process known as the warm handoff. And care companions work with parents to identify and connect treatment providers. So this program, care companions are available seven days a week for 24 hours a day. It is something that either we can help with our guidance department to help facilitate that process, or we will be able to provide, once we're fully connected, we'll be able to provide parents with the email and the website and all of the ways that they can anonymously connect with the Care Solace on their own.
This will be on our website somewhere?
It will. So we're, we're intending for, we're working on collaboration now and we're intending to roll this out into Suffer, in time to discuss that. So we want to do it as well. And I wanted to recognize staff recognitions as staff who were recognized for going above and beyond. To Mixana, Adam Newell, Scott Stone, Margaret Cameron Hickey, Kim Binsfield, Amy Holbrook, Christine Robinson, Michael Cowett, Officer Mel Verido, Lisa Dembowski, Todd Wilmington, Jen Cotton Herman, Darren McFarland, Karen King, Jared Shivers, Kate Donovan, Brian Johnson, Maureen Lees, Maureen O'Neil, Stacy O'Brien Murphy, Nora Hughes, Kristen Arcofelt, Debbie Snow, and Javier Herrera.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, back. I just have another question. Is Care Solace something that we had to, like, is it a budget item? Is something that you have to pay in to gain that access in those resources?
Yes, so it is. And so what we were looking at is what do we need to do to help support our students? And this, here it is though, it aligned with those efforts that would be supporting students as we come back from COVID. We've seen a lot of students who are working through anxiety and that seems to be that mental health piece that we really want to help support. Previously, I believe the district coordinated with Interfaith. However, this program is a program that is, provides treatment providers who have experience with different languages. So they have treatment providers who speak up to 75 different languages, not one person, but. And so this seems to be a good fit. And so we are looking at using SR funds as it would help to support students' mental health and.
So my question is, it is something that we pay for?
It is something that we have to pay for. And currently, we're using SR funds. It's not currently put in, into our current budget.
Right. But it's something that we want to think about, I guess. What I'm trying to say is it'sSR funds, but those are yeah, forever. So.
Yeah. So I think what our plan will be is that we have to take a look at, and we need to take a look at usage and ensure that how, how much is it being used?
Yeah.
And is it something that we should then roll into the budget and make sure that we are keeping track of that data and then looking at it and planning for it as we move forward.
Okay.
But thank you, thank you.
Todd, you made it for for me. I just saw Joe. He's like, I'll be there later.
Todd, a little bit of shout out.
Oh, for what? What'd you do? You're wonderful. We know, Todd deserves a shout out.
All right, very good. So thank you, Dr. Wilcox. All right. Director of Finance, up in Spreeley.
Hi, thank you. Well, since our last meeting, we put up warrant number 16 dated October 14th in the amount of $414,000.42. And we did an off-cycle warrant number 17 dated October 21st in the amount of $222,345.30. In addition to that, I have processed a small budget recast largely to address salary column changes and to aid in the FY '24 budget preparation process. And that total amount was $46,299.36. And in addition to that, in the throes of preparing the FY '24 budget and planning ahead for tasks and projects of compensation of the budget and addressing general ledger account reconciliations and our financial management system software user access profile. And that's it for right now.
Great. All right, thank you. That's a great question. Todd, all right, um, good. So I just have some quick remarks and a, and a quick statement. Hey, I was glad you talked about it. I had three things on my comments that all sort of thread together, if you think about it, in terms of like support, supporting families, supporting students, and supporting staff, each other, in no particular order. But I was, I was particularly pleased to learn more about the I Ready diagnostics and the fact that there's part of that application that's very user-friendly in terms of enabling teachers to communicate with parents on, you know, how their, how the kids are doing in, in reading. And the reason why I wanted to bring it up is that we brought it up in the school recruitment plans, I think, of last year. It was in Dr. Klingerman's evaluation, part of her goals and spread of the strategic funding. So I just didn't want to recite the fact that you know, I think it's, it's, it's really good news that we're moving forward in terms of helping families gain more access to these tools and these services. So it's great. Supporting students, I wasn't able to make the unified dashboard. It was really energizing.
I heard Connor's awesome.
It is awesome. They play great, but honestly, I was telling the CPAC room, it has to be the most fun sporting event I have ever been to. And I feel like all sporting events should be this collaborative and fun. And the energy is amazing. You cheer for whoever scores. Kids are happy. They're supporting one another. It's, it's really truly an amazing thing to watch. I, I love it. I think it's so fun. And the athletic ability of some of these students, half court shot from a kid from, you know, fun leader. It was like, crowd went wild. So it was amazing. That's awesome. Yeah.
And I heard that the, the whole, did you say the whole football team was there?
Yes, they were.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Some of the soccer team I saw there, some of the girls' sports, I've seen them there. So it's definitely a community community experience. And there's definitely a lot of support from other sporting teams within the school, high school. So it's great. It's nice to see.
That's fantastic. That's great. And then lastly, just supporting staff, supporting each other. Dr. Wilcox and I had, you know, just a quick exchange about the latest district professional development day. And I think you had said it was, you know, really well received, really well done. It was a great motivational speaker.
We did. We had Carrie Stock in the morning and she had a positive message. And I think that she was relatable. She was funny. She definitely shared some positive messages as we moved forward. And I think that from, just from the different conversations that I heard from, that people appreciated it. And so that was a great way to start our day.
That's awesome. Great. Awesome. So I, I had a brief statement, take like a minute and a half to read. So if you can delve into a reading statement. So the purpose of the statement is to address the concerns about how and why the school safety resolution presentation came to be on tonight's agenda. And I want to give some background. During our last school committee meeting, a member asked about the possibility of Julie Benati, I think it's here, participating in the school safety forum, actually the town forum. My reply was that Mrs. Benati had in fact already raised that question and had asked the school if she could set up a table in the hallway to hand out materials which had been permitted. Subsequent to that meeting, in my weekly planning meeting with Dr. Klingerman, I created a 20-minute slot on tonight's agenda to allow Mrs. Benati to make a presentation to the committee. I created the slot because after listening to Mrs. Benati in office hours and in public comments, I wanted to hear more about policy resolution work that she and her organization has been doing with other districts in the Commonwealth. So after speaking with some members over the last few days, it became clear that my placing Mrs. Benati on the agenda caused the confusion. So to paraphrase, we agreed that she'd do a table talk at the safety forum. Why is she all of a sudden on the agenda? We didn't agree with that. So I want to just say that I do understand the confusion and I want to clarify that Mrs. Benati was interested in making the community members aware of her work, presumably, which is why she asked for permission to have the hallway a table talk at next, at next month's town meeting. But Mrs. Benati has also petitioned the school committee to consider making a policy resolution, which was the purpose of her public comment and her participation in office hours. Now, as an individual member, I'm interested in hearing more about a potential policy resolution, which is the reason for the agenda item. These are two separate issues that you can play. Now adding to the vividness is the topic itself, which, like many other topics today, is emotionally and politically charged. Further, the topic is about gun safety in the home, which raises questions about school community poverty. So understandably, this is a hot button issue. Now, I want to remind members about our process and operating. Each member is encouraged to request that items be placed on our meeting list. It's been important for me to make this reminder often, because I believe that each of us should have a voice and should be able to bring items to the table. This includes the chair position. And I hate for future chairs to feel precluded from bringing items to the table simply because of their position. If a chair adds an agenda item, it may feel imposing, because technically, they're making the requests themselves. But Robert's Rules of Order has an app for them, which is why I come to love Robert's Rules of Order. If any member feels that an item should be tabled or removed from an agenda, they can and should make a motion to do so. So to paraphrase, paraphrase the rules, the chair creates the agenda, but the agenda belongs to the committee. So I just wanted to clear it to make that clarification and happy to have anyone else make any updates or comments.
On that or just?
Oh, no, just down.
I have, yeah, I have CPAC. Does anyone want to comment on that? Okay. So as with Danielle, I'd already mentioned, I went to the CPAC meeting last night, which was amazing. Like, if you want to give a shout out to some of our board members that are here, they did a great job with the meeting, our chair from the middle school and all in Chandler over there. And I think they also contributed and did a great job. So I do want to point out that they, their website, I wrote it down. DuxburyCPAC.org. So if you're interested or you have a child on an IEP, I'd recommend just checking out their website and getting on their email chain so that you can be updated with different information. One, the first subgroup they've committed is called FED, and it stands for Better Outcomes for Learning Disability Dyslexia. So I definitely recommend, if that's something that interests you, to please reach out to our Duxbury CPAC and get involved. It is growing and we hope to just see the numbers. And so that is all I have.
And can I just have a follow up? I had a parent ask me if board members of Duxbury CPAC can see individual student information. And I said, absolutely not. That's not their role. The, the role is advocacy and that is absolutely private privileged information. So I just wanted to make sure all parents are aware of that. Nope. Nor do we want to.
Nor do we want to.
Okay, very good. Any other updates to comment? Okay. All right. So let's move on to unfinished business. May I have a motion to approve the revisions to policy BEDB- E agenda format, please? Second? Okay, great. So this is just a follow-up. We had a quick vote in the last meeting about adding items into the agenda. And Dr. Klingerman reminded us that technically that means we have to update the policy itself, which is the reason why it's here. So the, the item is to include a small space between new business and public comment for considerations for future agendas. When we voted on it last time, it was unanimously passed. The only thing I wanted to clarify, at least in my mind, and we'll certainly talk about it really quickly. I would consider this, the reason why I put it on, should say, is to make it an additive way of enabling people to make suggestions about this, about agendas and not as the sole procedural way. So what I mean by that is I, I want to avoid in a standing meeting with Dr. Klingerman or have an email come to me or Kristen and have us talk to Dr. Klingerman about it. We decide to put it on the agenda. If someone disagrees with it, that of course is fine, but I just want to avoid the, sort of the reasoning of it and just say like, wait a minute, we didn't, we didn't talk about this in considerations for future events. So I just want to make this an additive way. It's like another channel of being able to make suggestions for the agenda. It does not take the place of the existing process. It's just, it's just an additional way for people to make suggestions. Does that make sense?
I'm a little lost, but that's all right. It's because I'm late to the game.
No, it's just like the way that we get things on the agenda now is any member can come to the chair and make a request and then the chair talks. No, it's just like the way that we get things on the agenda now is any member can come to the chair and make a request and then the chair talks it over with superintendent and most likely it goes on. Um, this is an additional way of doing it because sometimes, at least speaking for myself, ideas come to me when I'm in meetings. It's just like, oh, maybe you should help out that and it's moving. So we have five minutes in the meeting. It would be, it would be nice, I think, to have five minutes to say, hey, I have a suggestion.
Oh, yeah.
For a future. Do you know what I mean? I just don't want it to take the place of everything. I just don't want there to be confusion after to say like, hey, whoa, 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 whoa. We didn't talk about this in considerations for future events. It's not the point. This is an added, it's an additional channel to make suggestions. It doesn't take the place of. Does that make sense to you? Everyone good with that?
So we do it here or we do it?
Exactly. This is just, it's an additional way.
Hooey. I'm with you.
Okay, so we ready to vote? Okay, so can I, um, so all those who favor, uh, uh, revisions to policy BEDB dash E?
Aye.
Aye. Thank, uh, motion passes. Yes, thank you. Awesome. Um, may I have a motion to approve twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three superintendent goals, please?
So moved.
All right. So this is, um, I don't know if we need any other discussion and most people want to have it, but Dr. Klingman presented her goals, in the last meeting and, uh, I think we just want to make sure that we are memorializing with the votes.
My only question was to be asked.
I added a V.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
It is there, so. Yep. So you're approving the goals with the addition of the, um, high, identifying the high school principal search and the director of special education search.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We're ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passing unanimously. Thank you. All right. Uh, so new business. Um, may I have a motion to approve the girls' hockey overnight trip, please?
So, I mean, so.
Okay. So who's presenting on, on this?
Jeff is not here.
Okay.
He's coming.
All right.
So can we put it?
Should we table it too later in the, okay. So Jeff can table this one a little bit later. All right. Uh, very good. So we're not voting on the school improvement plan. So, um, Sarah and Todd, if you want to come up and, make your presentation, if you'd like to give. People say I was like Bob Saget, but.
Is this, no. Hold on. That one? All right, let me just stop sharing for a moment. October nineteen. There's a separate one in the. Oh my gosh, I keep clicking the wrong thing. Is this it? I don't think I see it in the folder. Was it a presentation, Ms. McGuire? This is it? And a lot of things happening on the screen right now, so bear with me. As I am trying to show this to the people on Zoom.
Okay. So, um, I'll start for the middle school. Um, and like we've done in the past, you have the entire school management plan. Um, and what we've done is highlight an item under strategic objectives. So I'll talk about it tonight, but, Um, so strategic objective one, which aligns, uh, to, uh, we addressed about building connected business practice tool and community partnerships with corporate sharing costs. Service, service and leadership. Um, at the middle school, we are working to leverage and support the equity audit process. That was earlier tonight, um, to evaluate and analyze CMA culture, our practices, our systems and our policies. Um, I was, I was really excited with the number of students in the middle school who were, um, interested in participating in the focus groups and are part of the, um, the stakeholder group meetings. Um, middle schoolers, uh, want to use their voice and it's still important that they're part of those conversations. And so, um, it is, it's just wonderful that they're able to be part of the conversation. Um, and we have a number of staff that are going to participate as well. Um, and then we're working to engage our staff and student group regularly, integrating our updated core values and vision and inclusive culture into our daily operations. So, um, you know, an activity as an example of this that we did in our last faculty meeting was to, um, dig into our individual educator goals, uh, aligned with the strategic plan and do some sharing out about what that actually looks like operationalized across content areas and pretty bubbles. Um, as a point. Strategic objective two, uh, we are, uh, leveraging inclusive and culturally responsive instructional practices, um, within observation tool, um, so that we can identify some of our exemplar, um, staff, uh, who are doing this really well. Um, and then in our, uh, departments, uh, we have folks, we're working to support folks getting into those other practitioners classrooms to sort of share practice. Um, and, uh, spend time with one another, talking about effective practice as we identify those strong tools. Uh, I had to shout out, uh, Caitlin Sheehan, uh, helped make a tool, that our leadership team is able to use as we walk through different classrooms to sort of look for key, indicators of inclusive practice, of high levels of engagement and those sorts of things. We can collect some of that data. Leadership team work to provide effective feedback to staff when correct, professional development and faculty and department time to, uh, increase the use of those best practices. Um, so we've been working with that tool.
Sarah, can you give an example of what that looks like when you see it?
Sure. So, um, for instance, uh, Mr. Alberta and I walked through some social studies classes today together. Um, and we were looking for, uh, examples of engagement across the classroom. So, um, uh, we walked into a classroom, a seventh grade classroom that had, um, they were working on a teaching, uh, activity. But rather than sort of sit and the teacher deliver the notes, they were in, um, mixed groups of students, based on, uh, abilities and needs. And the students were up and moving around to different stations. Um, they had assigned polls. Um, so somebody had to go to a station and turn, read out the content. The next student had to then, use their own words to explain what they just read. Then they had a note sheet, um, that was in like puzzle piece sheets. Sort of figuring out which piece of the puzzle about, um, uh, Indian democracy where they were just reading about. And then sort of debating where that fit and making their way through the stations. Uh, and so with our tool, we were seeing like, what is the level of engagement? Um, this, uh, was a supportive class, so, um, we knew some students may need some extra help. And were those students participating, actively? Were they, uh, able to, um, be part of those conversations? Those were the things.
Awesome. Thank you.
It was a great class. Although I may be a little bit biased. Uh, so strategic objective three. Um, we are working to regularly, um, and across all different types of opportunities, uh, leverage, uh, analyze and evaluate student data to inform our teaching practice. Um, and apply, use that to target appropriate support strategies. Um, and identify the needs of our students as effectively as possible. Um, so we have improved our tools, uh, in our student, uh, study team, uh, processes, um, to, uh, really try to, uh, accumulate like, the, the need for a certain practice as part of student getting to an end goal. So that those types of best practices can be used, uh, like across a student need area. Um, and, and really trying to, uh, have data be integrated into all of our, our conversations about student needs and how we're, uh, targeting, uh, skill and content and acquisition. Uh, and then part of that, so I included a second bullet here is around the integration of our tutor roles, um, at the middle school. So, uh, last year, you may remember that we piloted having, um, some intervention tutors, uh, in place. We used our own staff, how to work hard on some activity for that. Then through the budget process, we were able to, uh, get, uh, tutor roles. Um, we have just been able to hire, um, an English, uh, or, uh, we're using the verb literally, see broadly, um, English language arts tutor. Um, and she's already getting into, uh, classrooms and working with staff to, use their benchmark data and the forecast result we've just gotten to identify some students, uh, to begin interventions with, um, during academic sport. She's also pushing into some classes to see, uh, the types of practice and teachers are using and sort of supporting that with that. Um, we, it had been a bit challenging for us to find folks for these roles. So we are in the process, still of finding someone for an action. Um, we had a couple of, uh, recent applicants that came in and we're going to use. Uh, so I'm hopeful we can get that in place shortly. Um, but I'm in close contact with, uh, Allison Q, the, English supervisor and the youth director, even master supervisor. Um, so we have ideas, should we, you have a gap year in whose roles, to make sure that people get in with them.
And just the ELA, they do everything? Grammar, writing? Whatever the needs are, in conjunction with the teacher, they?
That's, that's, that's great. Uh, her expertise really is across the board. Um, but we have identified with some of the data points, um, uh, that like synthesizing ideas with, with multiple textures and area where we're seeing some agility for, thesis practice, um, in addition to some of the, uh, like, uh, more, uh, uh, foundational, like, reading comprehension strategies. So we're sort of trying to pick some of the things that some of the students and their needs and targeting. And then the fourth, uh, strategic objective, um, to support the, the building of the budget. Um, we are, uh, working to ensure that all of our stakeholder groups are part of the conversations around, budget needs throughout the process. So, um, you know, Dr. Klingman is coming to my next school council meeting. Um, I'm also, uh, very pleased that, uh, we now have a full board on the school council. So we've got, um, uh, parent, uh, guardian reps across, we have our community member and then, uh, I now have a couple of faculty members that are part of that to be with the PTA. Um, you on that in addition to, uh, seventh and eighth grader. Well, um, and through the presentation, I'll be using, um, the newsletter as well as our PTO meetings, we can bring that in person. We're excited about that. Um, to, uh, ensure that as much like feedback in the process and understanding question and answer, um, can happen with all of us.
Great.
Great. Any other questions?
Good luck as usual.
Sounds like a great start.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Well, the beauty of going last, you're gonna hear a lot of same stuff. And that's because she's, she's planning herself, right? So a lot of the, uh, work we put into developing the plan, we're, we're gonna work on it. That's okay. As you were further away from the initial year, which is the plan, it's like getting more into, you know, very specific things, but, uh, we're definitely need that. But at high school, we, we have the, uh, the honor of working for our NEAS accreditation. Um, to the process for the, the kind of regulation to design for the beginning. So we're gonna be, uh, self-reflection and active audit, but, uh, please, we'll back to ours later. We ought to, we've been, uh, working on or probably providing, when we decide to call the practice, it's, it's healthy. It is, uh, um, it's a ritual review. People are taking the practice and get a lot of information out of support formation. You know, it's, uh, more private from our students, that we've been, um, uh, we survey the NEAS disclosed. Um, our students did an amazing job of, uh, giving surveys and getting times in school days and that and work life. We survey as well, we make those reports turn. And over eight hundred, I think eight hundred and five left is, uh, based on last time I've already, uh, given a survey. So hopefully we learn. Um, staff also did a great job of giving hundred faculty people a survey, but, uh, personal staff who were, who were over a hundred and ten people were on it for the survey. So, that made a lot of change to the staff that have been serving us. Um, unfortunately, uh, the family of the community members won't be, uh, seventy of them are fully in six markets. So. So, uh, we hope we put out, we pushed it out more times. Uh, a lot of people, we'll figure it from the third reason. Um, that is another great way to expand the account. Uh, that's really important for our age. Uh, and obviously that could give us a lot of information, uh, that our, uh, stakeholder meeting actually looked great. Um, to have kids involved, but also just to have, I guess, they're like, it's really. I mean, we did, uh, a little cafe walking around. I've never done like that before, but it was great exercise and coming together, my understanding and safe way. But that's a way of working out some really good ideas and plans. So, um, what we need to work on is a little more, you think you're going on in school. So. Which keeps it there too. Same thing that, um, Mr. Wired, uh, went over, but this has been a healthy response. It was a perfect practice. I'm trying to teach and staff with advice and what faculty demonstrated, practice management. Um, same thing, uh, we're just gonna build a machine, put together, uh, with the staff, but also with everything. A lot of staff, whatever, it started bad for, for urgent staff, how to get the classes and add a bunch of staff, I can't believe. Um, and so they're very good popping in, uh, the debate models. History as well and. But, uh, you know, I think it's a lot of great meaningful comments. Their staff, I recognize. They can open the door to the classroom next to them, like, go on the hall, they can go to the subject and go grab some really, great tools or, um, pieces of information that are visible a lot. So they can, uh, shut out their kids and make sure that our kids, at all levels are accessing it. Be the goals that they will pull for themselves in the future. And for the third one, department integration with the teaching learning alliance crisis, providing for all students with the furniture, disruption of all forces. Um, it's under COVID every year since like ten years. So we didn't start it with TLA last year, but I worked with Rhea last year and, and then she was outstanding at getting together with our subjects. And, uh, searching practices and putting together a plan. Going through it last year and see where it teaches. I mean, they're also coming up with some, um, uh, tools and resources and PD for our staff to, to really see what that looks like, um, and how that they can differentiate, uh, the practices. So all students have access to this or not. Um, and then happy to live, like, the last two, which is scheme two, which is three. We want to make sure that, um, the resources are not just for our kids, but for our staff, help our kids. And I think that's the most important thing. We're finding time in the day through, um, giving walkthroughs, but also PD days and, we're actually part of days, happily being, in utilizing all the experts and outside, we see the little practices. Um, obviously we can do a great job, we do, but it's also the necessity of coming and taking a look and saying, hey, this is awesome, but, if you care about this, we may even try to add this to. Um, so that's something we're working on and, um, delay is still with us. So this year, but very. And then the fourth one, uh, same thing, Mr. Wired, about like five staff. Level of expertise, yes, school council, faculty department meetings. Um, it's a feedback meeting, great school council, uh, some support of us. Um, I do have a little bit of a claim here with PTO, so we need a high school, get the fall draft PTO, we can go people to my age and help out. Move it in, uh, I'll say the little time for our land, which is awesome. Take that. Well signed. Great. But, uh, uh, also get involved in some of the discussions, reminder, just, yeah, for this, you call your job, you got it, great. But it also means our faculty meetings and kind of things like you saw. Um, you know, whatever our ass are, whatever needs are, I think that all seems internal, that works, you know. We can see that in the back end, of course, the question is, I'm like, of course, if you can't see, well, they're moving away from this area, they couldn't even work for the city. And why you're alive, um, uh, it's easy to say. He's trying to be there, he's been in the middle of high school, and probably kind of uh that current, and it's like that. If he's gonna explode, so we'll be ready to move, so um, kind of do that inside. Correct, there's uh, most kids are even here on the class, and there's probably some kids uh on the wall of minutes. Oh, I didn't know we had that, so I was next to you, so I'll get, but that's really great opportunity. Um, while it's looking at the longboard, and now we want to build that, and that is our school skills that aren't just in the uh acting, but like in the real world, how they want to go. Um, you know, even with all this kind of stuff, like that wouldn't stand out to me in kind of.
Great, yeah, questions or comments?
Just put a follow up on the survey, but I'm out there. It wasn't a difficult survey, just like this way. I heard a little bit about that.
I do think it's slow, yeah, it's just slow this week.
Hmm.
Uh, yeah, it's okay. I I'm sure we had more, but we did another today, I was violated from the US, but.
Um, can I make, can I just make a quick comment? Can I put you two on the spot for just a second? I know we've, you just, I'm really glad you brought up the need for PTA representatives, especially from the high school and middle school. And I think what happens in our community is that we have parents that volunteer in so many different areas. Once their kids start to pick interest areas, whether it's music, or whether they're part of the boosters, or whatever, if they're in drama. And I think that we see the PTA, PTO drop off happen at the secondary level. But um just with some of the events, I know the middle school just did an amazing ropes course um activity. Some things that have, some of these enrichment activities that are so important, that cost money, that we've seen um a real increase in the need for students to have those, that this is really the social and emotional learning. The non, it's kind of outside the classroom, hands-on, social opportunities for kids, it has a cost. And we have a Disney trip coming up this year. And when we talk about doing an equity audit and having access provided, we're just finding a need for our um middle school and high school. I think we do a great job at the elementary, we can always do better. But I think when it looks, when we look at um, we've, we've tried to amplify the school councils to be able to um support the 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 staff in making decisions involving the teachers and the parents, but with the PTA, we're really seeing that we need to do additional fundraising. So when we have students that confidentially need support to be able to attend a Disney trip, or if we, if the cost of a ropes course trip is making it so that not all families can um attend that, it's just a tricky thing. So I just, um, while we have Ms. McGuire, Mr. Wilmington here, I just wanted to share that the financial need and equity is something that we really want to take a look at. And so if there's any parents who aren't involved with uh volunteering with your kids' uh interest groups, please reach out if you would like to. I mean, I think at the high school right now, I don't even know how many PTA volunteers there actually are.
Oh, behind us, right? Just that, set up that uh for homecoming, uh to turn down that the homecoming, kind of the behind us himself and trust me, that that goes a long way and don't stop, you know, that that is an operation. Cause it's kind of second floor, this is what started that, I don't know too, but um, it might just be the person that's there, it means um you know, we're in a house, trying to get that person that's living. Um, we just need two more parents who are students, right?
Yeah, our parents are so generous in terms of if we say we need food or items dropped off, that's that's great, but we also need people at the table to talk about how we can do some fundraising and and be able to to support some of the enrichment programs too. So just wanted to mention that.
I thought we might do, if you find them, um, a lot of this is our to families that they want to make sure, or everybody's like, very, 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 I'm sure everybody's like on sale, you know, I know, you know, it's uh great that that um it's around, right, from Charlotte, right, we're trying to communicate to that, everybody can go in. It's just to make the possibility of any two of us. Um, and also
Is your school council together? Do you have, was there an election or can't remember?
We had, we had a question, we were in, so I heard him.
I looked at the website, it's not up updated.
Okay.
It wasn't on the website I looked.
Maybe.
Yeah.
That's not.
High school, I mean, uh, school council?
Yeah, me too.
Are they?
Yeah, they're supposed to be the town board of uh
Are they on the Duck Spray?
Yes, the high school.
Oh, okay.
And then, yeah. I will be there, because I think I'll fall off if they say that, that's it. Um, but I know a lot of it is part of you until when I have a book to call it.
Awesome. Yes, no core. Thank you.
Thanks very much. How were you, uh, how you liking the interim job?
It's been great.
What's the biggest surprise? Then it makes that big surprise.
Uh, I don't think there's any surprises, you know, I have, we're proposing doing the past.
Yeah.
Uh, it's it's not a real surprise, it's it's a different time, right?
Yeah.
A lot of stuff, which we're doing the day with the kids. Um, very well, I have no meetings during the school hours, making some school hours. Um, here you can take a lot of that information to get done, you know, to try to get to the kids as much as you can, you know, put an email in background or anything. And then um, you get into school with the kids, so you're out there doing a lot of shit, it's, you know, that's back there, that's part of the day. Uh, you do those things to make sure the kids, but then that email that gets advanced a lot later. So that's kind of what we exchange it for the time limit goes, as opposed to that.
I think he loves it. I get the feeling. It's just, he's just loving it every day. That is the biggest surprise, he has shared that.
That's right. Good, all right, well, sounds like you're hitting brown run this. Awesome, thank you.
You're a good team.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before being um
Yeah.
Since Michael
Yes.
got here, do you have anything that you want to share with us?
Um, we're not, probably some part of this night, probably three or so, because I like, I thought it was six o'clock, so I got what happened. Um, but not really, um, we had um spirit week last week, and Pepper alley. And then we had homecoming, which over seven hundred people attended, and it went really well in the cafeteria. It was like two hours, but it proved them.
Yeah.
Great.
When they had a blast.
Yeah, outdoors, the outdoors base.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it was fallen, I'm sorry that uh you didn't know the bike, that was a little, but your presence is present.
Yeah. When I saw your card, it was.
Mike, appreciate it. All right, all right, so um, let's move on to the school safety resolution. Um, so I think this has been, I even have a co presenter. You have a co presenter with you?
Thank you. Well, this is
Okay, and so we have those, I'm not too late because of the type of posters meeting. They're taking over all of our equipment.
You know, I'm having a real hard time.
The beach meeting.
Yeah, don't call it the program.
I'm sorry.
The beach reservation, it's the beach reservation meeting.
Um, so Dr. Klingman has your deck. Um, and so if it's okay, she can, she can drive you to say next slide or whatever.
Is this, Julie, is this what you, is this the one you want?
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, just let me share my screen with the people at home. Roll that right into it.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
All right.
We're gonna share. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I want to say thank you to the rest of the great fourteen members who are attending. School administrators and others who are here listening today. To consider a simple proposal that we know what helps you do prevent gun violence in school and in our own. In light of the recent events, I want to let you know, we are going to talk about it. I'm Julie Benati, and my policy is absolutely clear, either we are parents in the district and volunteers with the Be Smart program of Everytown for Gun Safety. A grassroots organization that works to prevent gun violence in communities of poverty. Everytown for Gun Safety is a nonpartisan organization. We are supportive of responsible gun owners, keeping firearms out of the hands of dangerous and unauthorized people and focused on public safety. Our sincere wish is to raise awareness and action in local communities for evidence-based strategies that work. And specifically tonight, for measures on the impact of school shootings in these communities. What we'll present is an according but over often overlooked piece of the puzzle for helping reduce gun violence. We have all been horrified too many times by school shootings and threats. Catherine Jedigan at Robb Elementary School in Omaha, Texas, and May, and at Oxford High School in Michigan, and the member of that. Last December, schools endured TikTok threats of school gun violence. Other threats late last year surfaced in schools in Whitman, Hanson, Revere, Wild Hill, and Lawrence. And recently, students in Charlestown and Everett were arrested for bringing firearms to school. Massachusetts is not immune to gun violence. In the face of threats, schools did the right thing by carefully monitoring them, keeping parents informed of their credibility and tightening security where necessary. However, what is often omitted in school communications to parents is a proactive message. The critical necessity of families to secure storage of firearms they may own. So we urge you today to add one more component to your school safety strategies. Mainly incorporating proactive messaging about secure firearm storage to protect students from potential tragedies. Encouraging secure storage practices can make an enormous difference in reducing gun violence in school communities and would address the most common source of firearms used in school gun violence incidents. In Massachusetts, we have and are working with many school districts to pass a store storage modification resolutions, which sets the framework for this safety conversation. Our presentation will cover these topics, and I'll be the most First, what can we understand by this term gun? Firearm-related deaths are the most devastating form of gun violence. Currently, we are averaging one hundred fifteen firearm-related deaths per day in this neighborhood. More than fifty-nine percent of the numbers one of the certain of your races. Firearm-related injuries are a second form of gun violence, and they often bring devastating consequences in high society. For every firearm-related death, there is three three times in the number of that visible, but traumatic. Nevertheless, our firearm deaths as a domestic violence incidence are school drugs. Lastly, we have, what can we see about violence is gun violence? All these situations need a lasting impact on the
Can you just speak up as loud as you can so that the audio picks it up? Thank you.
In twenty twenty, there was an unprecedented surge in firearm sales, both nationally and in our state, and this trend continued into twenty twenty-one. Americans legally purchased almost twenty-three million firearms in twenty twenty, a sixty-four percent increase over the year before, and the highest on record. In twenty twenty-one, there were close to twenty million legal purchases that trend continues. These statistics capture sales made with background checks. They don't indicate additional sales made without background checks, estimated in the millions of. A WBUR analysis of state data found that gun dealers in Mass sold almost two hundred and seventy-six thousand firearms from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one, about a fifty-seven percent increase compared to twenty nineteen. We know that while millions of responsible gun owners store their firearms securely, more than half of gun owners do not store all of their, all of their guns. I know that guns are an environmental issue, and we all may come from a different backgrounds. Many of us are parents, grandparents, or other caregivers. Some of us are gun owners and some are not. Some of us may even be gun violence survivors. Whatever our backgrounds, we surely can agree on three things. We all want our kids to grow up happy and fulfilling. We each have the right to make responsible decisions about how to protect our homes, families, and communities, including whether or not to have a gun in our home. And if we can prevent even one child's gun death or injury, it is our responsibility to do so. Now, I'd like to present some disturbing facts about gun violence in minors. According to just released CDC data, in the U.S., firearms are now the leading cause of death for all minors. More than one thousand eight hundred minors are killed with guns every year. An average of five children every day. The we include statistics for eighteen and nineteen-year-olds, the number doubles. Six thousand more minors are injured every year, often causing devastation to their lives and the cost of society. Every year, three million children witness gun violence. We know that children exposed to violence, crime, and abuse are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, suffer from depression, anxiety, and PTSD, fail or have difficult views in school, and potentially engage in criminal activity. We should not underestimate this impact on their lives and on our communities. We know that in the U.S., the number of minors who live in homes with at least one loaded unlocked firearm is four point six million. Did you know that seventy-eight percent of school shooters under the age of eighteen obtained the guns from their home or the homes of relatives and friends where they were insecure? Next. Over eighty percent of minors who die by gun suicide use a gun accessible to them from their own home or that of a family member. Next. In twenty seventeen, CDC national youth survey showed that seventeen percent of high school students surveyed had seriously considered attempting suicide within the last year. Another study showed that forty-one percent of adolescents in gun-only households reported having easy access to guns in their home. In Massachusetts, the percentage of high school students seriously considering suicide are actually unadmitted, have have risen in this year. Next.
Am I on the right side for you? Okay, sorry, I jumped ahead.
Um, firearms suicide make up nearly half of suicides among young people. Multiple factors elevate the risk of suicide, including current life stressors and historical risk factors. This trend has been intensified by the pandemic. Fear of the illness itself and social isolation causing an increase in anxiety and loneliness. Action must be taken to address these root causes, but one thing is clear. Reducing unsupervised unauthorized access by youth to firearms can significantly reduce risk. Next. Unintentional shootings by minors are another area of concern. Nationwide, in twenty twenty-one, there were at least three hundred ninety-two unintentional shootings by children, leading to a thirty-nine percent increase in unintentional shooting deaths in children compared to twenty nineteen. No story of these tragedies, tragic losses is quite the same, but all stories are devastating and all are preventable. These are not accidents. Most unintentional gun deaths in actual events occur in the round home. Involved guns that are loaded and accessible can occur when children or teens play with their family with guns. Fortunately, such cases do not have been often in our state. However, there have been a few reported recent years, and with the recent surge of firearm sales, we must raise awareness and keep tragedy out. Even more than ever. In Massachusetts, we sometimes meet new stories like these. All took place because of a common ground, unsafe guns. The children involved, bringing the aids from two to twenty-two, that were not included. In Abington, an eleven-year-old boy found a handgun in his friend's home from discharge yet while playing, hitting his friend in the head, causing a serious injury. And in Bolio, a five-year-old boy got a loaded gun to school that he had found with his grandfather. Thankfully, it was removed at the pool before any tragedy occurred. That's When firearms are not securely stored in homes and vehicles of family, relatives, and friends, the risk of tragedies occurring the risk of tragedies occurring due to unsupervised and withholding access to unsecured firearms can increase. This is for youth suicide, unintentional shootings, or shootings in the country. Next. Gun violence is a complex issue. There is no one solution to reducing gun violence, but there are many evidence-based solutions. Raising public awareness about the importance of secure firearm storage is one of these solutions. Secure storage practices are promoted by the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Shooting Sports Foundation, National P T A, and many other organizations, and they are qualified in our Massachusetts state laws. Next. Reducing gun violence begins in the home and in the local community. Everyone has a role to play, as seen here at the top of this slide, and this includes schools. So why should schools be involved? Schools are in a unique position to raise awareness through their broad outreach. They are in touch with students' behaviors and mental health. The majority of school shooters are either current or former students of the school. Schools have a responsibility to implement ways to reduce risks of school shootings, and they have a vested interest in preventing gun violence as stress related to gun violence affects student performance and well-being. Next. There is a relevant report entitled Keeping Our School Safe: A Plan to Stop National shootings and End Gun Violence in America's Schools. Every town for gun safety, and the N E A and the A F T, the nation's two largest teacher unions, collaborated on the report. Every school district knows that we need meaningful action to keep our schools safe, the kind of action that is based on facts about gun violence in schools and includes preventing it from occurring in the first place. The report is evidence-based and presents eight proactive solutions proven effective. One of these eight solutions is to encourage secure firearm storage practices in the school community. Massachusetts has enacted a strict state storage law, including paragraphs about child access prevention, which is useful. National data shows that one in three gun owners in states with child access prevention laws are not aware of their state law. So it is equally important to raise public awareness about these laws and the public's legal responsibility to follow them. The report mentions the Be Smart program, which we will touch on on the next slide. Be Smart is an educational program of every town for gun safety endorsed by the National P T A. The program promotes five easy-to-remember behaviors for adults to help reduce tragedies which occur when unsupervised unauthorized children and teens gain access to unsecured firearms. It involves gun owners and non-gun owners. Smart is an acronym. S is for secure guns in homes and vehicles. M, model responsible behavior around guns. A, ask about whether guns are secured in others' homes, an important tool for non-gun owners. R, recognize the role of firearms in suicides. T, tell your peers to be smart. The bottom line is that responsibility for keeping our kids' safe lives with the children, not with children. Be Smart has been presented at over six thousand events nationwide since twenty fifteen in all fifty states, and we would welcome the opportunity to present it in the Duckberry School District as one way to implement a secure storage resolution. Next. In an August twenty-two report by every town for gun safety, nearly three million students taken to all nationwide are now attending schools with firearm storage awareness policies in place. These policies demonstrate full commitment in raising awareness about the lifesaving effects of secure storage practices and current safe storage laws where they exist. This movement began in the middle of twenty nineteen, and many schools in the states shown on this slide have either passed secure storage notification resolutions and/or partnered with the Be Smart program, and the list is growing. Secure storage notification resolutions provide a framework for implementation, are proactive, evidence-based, entail no costs, promote a simple but wide-ranging message, empower the public, and do not create any extra burden for teachers. Next. So why adopt a secure storage notification resolution? Massachusetts schools have already undertaken many measures to increase student safety. They inform their communities about threats and/or relevant gun violence related issues, and put additional security in place if warranted. Some schools have implemented threat assessment programs, hardened physical infrastructure, adopted the Sandy Hook Promise No Design programs, and could have used Alice or Alice-like training. However, something simple is missing. Schools should also proactively raise awareness. Schools care about and have a vested interest in all activities of school safety. Raising awareness about the lifesaving effects of secure firearm storage should be included in your safety messaging, just like messaging substance abuse, internet safety, fire safety, vaping, and more. We provide a model resolution for Massachusetts with school committees used as a basis for developing their own resolution. Schools can choose to adopt the language as shown or modify it. The model language is as follows. Resolve that the board or committee directs the superintendent and staff to notify parents, guardians, and the school community of the importance and lifesaving effects of secure firearm storage and their legal obligations per current Massachusetts Safe Storage Law to protect minors from accessing unsecured firearms. This is the immediate approach. And resolve that the board or committee and the superintendents will continue to work with local law enforcement, health agencies, and nonprofits to collaborate and increase efforts to educate district parents of their obligations regarding secure storage of firearms in their homes and vehicles. This is a broader, longer-term approach that ensures future action. Next. We ask Ducksperry Public Schools to join the national conversation and commit to a path that will have future longevity by adopting a secure storage notification resolution that would also include Be Smart programming for adults. Next. After adopting a resolution, notifying the school community should take place as soon as possible and on a regular basis, at least annually. The purpose of this notification is proactive, and every day that goes by before awareness is raised widely presents a risk of tragedy. Doing such a notification on a regular basis is a very bare minimum that we are asking school districts to do. There are many examples of how school districts notify their school communities at their discretion, and there are fully listed here on this slide. Next. Besides the notification methods mentioned, the broader approach involving collaboration with law enforcement, health agencies, or nonprofit organizations opens up opportunities for ongoing programming. It could be educational programming for parents and staff, educational programming for students, events focused on school safety, sending out Be Smart materials to home, putting a link on a website, and raising awareness through school teleforms. Next. The Plymouth School District was the first, but now four districts in our state to promote secure firearm storage as part of their overall focus on student safety, bypassing a resolution in May of twenty-one. This resolution is an important service to the Plymouth school community. As part of the implementation of the resolution during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, Plymouth has emailed parents and the community. Both the dat email on their website invited us to participate at their Health and Safety Fair and invited us to present Be Smart at a variety of venues. Schools across the country have used many different ideas to implement their resolutions, and we can do this too in Ducksperry. Next. This is how the Plymouth School District's parent email looks. The messaging includes links to many resources, including the Be Smart website, the Plymouth Police Department's website, the General's Office, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and every town for gun safety. Next. We offer many resources, which you can see on this slide. Next. In closing, I'd like to highlight that the American Academy of Pediatrics has concluded that the absence of guns in homes is the most effective means to prevent suicide, homicide, and other firearm-related incidents in children and teens. But if there are guns in the home, the American Academy of Pediatrics states that storing guns unloaded and locked with ammunition kept in a separate place can best mitigate the risk of child's firearm injury. We, as individuals and as schools, can prevent the tragedies which occur when unsupervised unauthorized children and teens gain access to unsecured firearms. Schools should add their important voice to other community advocates by actively educating parents and caregivers about how secure firearm storage can save lives. Thank you very much for your attention today. We hope that we can be a resource for Ducksperry Public Schools as you take the very important step of normalizing the conversation around secure gun storage and making a positive impact on that. Have any questions?
So anyway, any questions? That was a great presentation.
Have you spoken to our S R Os? I spoke with the town chief. So I didn't speak to the other people in the buildings, but I spoke with the people.
Do you have any either statistical or word of mouth with the schools that have adopted this? Any feedback on positivity or prevention?
So I am actually an individual. Which is why I started with my first, the academy, and that ones there. Everybody that I've spoken to, both in administration and for teachers and staff, parents, everybody has supported it. We have not had any pushback from anybody. Which, to be honest with you, I actually did expect it. As I know that this can be a divisive issue, and it was not that.
I meant more with like, has there been a student? Do we have any anecdotal evidence that a student maybe was thinking of suicide, but now the gun's locked up? Or do you not have any?
I personally, yeah. I mean, I do know that if in Plymouth, if a student is, you know, a suicidal ideation that it's a mean risk to be in to work with our students, if they say that they have access to a firearm, especially local P T S D S R O's, they, you know, they will go to the home, you know, that.
Yeah, it's confidential.
But I don't, I mean.
We have that, we have that in Ducksperry too, just so you know, and anyone listening to this presentation, we do have a risk assessment process that's in collaboration with Ducksperry P D.
Right.
Just a more of an operational question, without going into like a lot of detail, because we have to move on. But you mentioned there are four districts who have adopted these, like these types of resolutions. What's been the process of? Can you, can you just give like a really quick, high altitude, like of how a district has gone through the process of adopting it?
Typically, what I think I've seen, what happens with Plymouth and others as well, is that it first will go to, you know, the committee will vote to pass it to a subcommittee policy subcommittee, and then they will either take the resolution as is or modify it, and then bring it back to the whole community to vote on.
Okay. And then, and does the policy subcommittee sort of work jointly with? Are you involved in, have you been involved in those policies? There's no, no, okay.
I know, other than in Plymouth, there was some question about where the statistics came from, so I would make sure to provide those.
Okay, great.
And one other question, just I'm thinking like, this is more of a resolution for parents, because obviously, hopefully, the students, you know, middle school students don't own guns that they have to lock up, so. Any feedback from parents receiving this literature? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So obviously, we have this as a discussion. I didn't know as an action item. It's probably no surprise to you, which is like a problem process. And so, you know, we'll consider it, consider what you said. I think there's a lot of useful information, and there may be more discussion in the future. But thank you again for the time. We appreciate it. And thank you for keeping it to twenty minutes. That was eerie. I mean, you were right that.
I think she's a professional.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, again, if anything comes up after this, you have a conversation, if you have questions.
Okay.
I have a question, I guess. As a parent, or, you know, if you're concerned for me, maybe that, or as a school member, because it does heal with the home, not with more at home. So I feel like, you know, as Matt said in the statement, mother and I are working with the company, it's something that is questionable. And gun safety in a school obviously is very important, I can see the mention. My first thought is, would the statement from the S R O and this information pushed out from the S R O be as effective? Because personally, like, you know, we've had a lot of discussions last year about the vaccine, and I always say, you can talk to the expert on that. And I feel like the police department and our S R O is going to be experts. So my first inclination, the information should really come from experts rather than from the school community, other than the terrorists. So would you be opposed to the information coming from that avenue? So and one of the things that's part of the resolution is that there, that you resolve to continue to work with local law enforcement, mental health agencies, for example, like the Suicide Prevention Coalition in Plymouth, right? Like organizations that have that information and are the experts. You know, we are an organization that focuses on gun violence, and we have a whole research team behind us, and we provide that data. I'm not asking that you, as a, you know, a committee, are the ones that are saying that this is the message, like this is what it is, like you're bringing in the, like have that data, have that information, and you're sharing it out, and you're committing to continuing to share that out. Does that make sense? It's, it's, you're committing to having that relationship with the experts.
But if we make a resolution and we're resolving, yeah.
I feel like we have that relationship, and personally, I'm like, I think this is great information if the S R O is willing to put it out. I think that's the impressive. So I guess maybe this is the ownership of.
I think the school committee could also approve this to be part of our safety and security webpage with information. And I think if the policy subcommittee creates a resolution similar to one that other districts have done, it will be able to be voted on, but I think if the resolution itself isn't something that's approved by the committee, I would think that the Ducksperry Police and the School Department would be able to, while maybe not have a resolution, but would be able to have information on our website, accessible to parents and sent out each year on a schedule, and to have you attend events like our safety forum that we have coming up. So I think that there's a way to endorse your message, whether or not there's a formal resolution as a school district policy.
Sure. I guess the idea of the resolution is that, you know, administration can change within the district. If the next person that presents is, we're not going to do that, you know, there is, there's a little bit of protection that that would continue until actions are taken to remove that policy.
Right, and I think to your, to your point, you know, this is a sample resolution. So the idea is, I think it would obviously improve us to see kind of what the other issues look like, which I'm sure you can drive, to understand how they've been modifying other places, things that they've not thought about, or ways we want to, you know, represent the language for our district, so that doesn't have to be exactly like here. Sorry, that would be something that would lead to part of the. Do you have a lot of thoughts on my school quarters, and then you go? It's not the same as well, it's trends, you know.
In that place that we have, yeah, yeah. In, in Nyford, there was a resolution that was in fact with schools with, and now the mayor is talking about wanting to also adopt some.
And has it ever gotten over that, so that there it went the script to town? Has there any, have you seen any evidence of town kind of being?
Not that I'm aware of.
For the police or the, you know, public safety.
Yeah, and not, not that I'm aware of. I mean, it might, I know that there is, there's actually legislation that has passed in the state of California for this information to be processed. But it started, you know, at the, actually in the LA, so we went back to the. And then it spread through other districts and out to the state. And that's a kind of a different direction. The information is, is as tell you, I don't think everybody's any questions about why we're handling the work, I think it's how we're going to hold on. That'll go into the subcommittee and then.
Well, I don't know, I mean, like, I don't know if we should even like, make that decision tonight because, um, maybe I, I would suggest maybe we all just think about it and then possibly a few judges, we can, we can have a short discussion on how we would go forward, we decided to go forward the best way, so in other words, like maybe if those go to something the steps that we're giving fun of, but maybe there are other, other ways to do it good, like that people could have, so. I can, I would think it's sort of like, yeah, I would say like, you know, this was just to sort of get an, uh, sort of an entrance to the information, so we can think about it and then um, we can possibly in a future meeting have some time to have some group discussion on what if anyone has something to do.
I would definitely, I think I hope people are listening, I hope people access this, um, you know, because they recorded and put it on the website so that I think I would, you know, you would want to see, hopefully, if people are interested and want to engage in this topic, I hope they come to future meetings. Um, you know, to talk about it and whether it's support or concern, if one way or the other. Um, that's something I would want to have an opportunity for, you know, to determine where we will.
All right, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Awesome. Okay, so is, did you say Mr. Madsen?
Yes, he is.
Did you say it was Mr. Madsen's birthday?
I did.
Okay.
We'd like to let him, let him go as soon as possible.
So, uh, Jeff.
Yeah.
Do you want to, um, we're, we're waiting for you now.
Well, thank you for waiting for me, I finished.
Sure you were, you don't want to have candles.
You see the burn on my forehead?
I think this is an action item, so may I have a motion to approve the girls' hockey overnight trip?
Second.
Okay, so you can start.
All right, uh, thank you for hearing the motion, um, the, the girls' hockey coaches have, uh, approached to ask for an overnight trip to, uh, New Hampshire to visit at, um, Dartmouth College. Well, I think we have a player there, you know, my, I can't really detail that, but um, I know this coach is married, knows the, uh, player on the team and um, we could get some boards, the campus play Hanover High School, uh, Hanover, uh, New Hampshire and, uh. But Hanover, New Hampshire, actually the, my mentor is the athletic director, just as I do, I school athletic director and coach. Uh, and he is now in Hanover, we decided to hear that it would be probably coming up and, uh, then for Dartmouth and maybe potentially a practice, uh, as a Dartmouth man. So one night, overnight trip, not unlike any of the other athletic trips taken with that. No, no.
No, I just wanted.
I thought I'd fix that, oh, no, it's not, it's not the price.
Yeah, five thousand dollar trip to New Hampshire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other question? Thanks for, thanks for pointing that one out.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Trying to shoot that one by us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, already did.
Yeah.
They did it.
They did, they're working hard. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, ready to vote?
Aye.
Aye, let's pass this button, congratulations, happy birthday, have a good trip. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Maiman.
Hey, Mrs. Really has been chomping at the bit, waiting patiently to present the fiscal year twenty four capital budget.
Yes, I will talk to her about.
Welcome.
Um, hello, um, we have Christina Knowles here, our facilities director, our current facility director, who's going to also, um, participate in the main, to speak to some of the facilities that is on the list tonight. Um, so we're just going to jump right in. Um, so this first slide is, um, some definitions and, uh, talk through our process. Bring pressure for us, some of our old timers and, um, information for our newcomers. Um, we break our capital budget, um, down into two categories. Uh, capital equipment, which is one time or infrequent purchases with a useful life of five years or more. Um, and capital projects, which are projects to help maintain or improve existing school assets. Our overarching process is to review our current five-year plan. Um, define new projects and needs, solicit feedback from our relevant stakeholders. Um, this year we've done that through meeting with our, um, principals and our directors and internal stakeholders, our administration. Um, and then we, um, have discussions in the allocate across all phases for, um, multi-year initiatives. Um. This next slide shows our school department capital budget requests. I will say that this year there were, um, a lot of really important needs, but there is only a finite amount of funds available, so we had to, um, really, um, break down what was the top priorities. Um, so at a high level, um, and we'll go through slides for each of these categories. Uh, for capital equipment, um, technology, DHS, IMAX, theater replacement, um, totally, I'll, I'll give you a month when I do the slides, um, some additional capital technology for district switches. Um, we'll talk in, in much more significant detail around the scale kind of complex, um. Uh, multi-year request for DHS and BMS instrument replacements. Um, annual DHS, uh, district for interior replacement. And, um, phase one of Chandler North and South Playground Projects. Uh, the next slide. Uh, these are all capital projects. The, all, we, um, from our special town meeting yesterday. We've had some roof items on for emergency repairs to the Alden and Packroofs. Um, in addition to that, we have, that's going to buy some time for now. Uh, so we have larger scale repairs for restoration that is needed, um. We also have some, prepare some boilers at Alden and the PAX, phase one, and some back when running.
So sorry to clarify, the stuff that was, uh, sixty thousand that we're celebrating. Obviously, that's basically the Band-Aid. So we, so we got it for this time.
Yes, so we're showing that, and we have the aerial scans, which will help define really how bad the leaks are and what we can do in regards to whether or not we do our restoration, that we have to do a full replacement. So those aerial scans will give us a little bit of a dependent budget amount, once those are worked through. Sure. So, um, over the course of the past five years, there have been thirty eight work order requests entered to various leagues throughout Alden School. Um, as everybody knows, we had a major drainage last year and a subsequent insurance claim. So at that time, the facility was named the Garland Company to inspect all the very public school, school roof. And identify immediate and future concerns. Following the inspection, Garland made the recommendation of a phased replacement of Alden roof structures. The recommendation would be to replace section A, which was the section up over the professional development line. Uh, for fiscal year twenty four at an estimated cost of four hundred thousand dollars. Section B and E, which are the remainder of Alden School, would require a restoration of a rubber section and reshangling of reshingled areas, uh, on its floor. This is recommended to be completed in fiscal year twenty five at an estimated cost of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. However, we could break this into two sections, allowing DPS to re-shingle the older section of the roof against fiscal year twenty five. And with the repairs that we could make, that would extend the rubber section out in fiscal year twenty six or in fiscal year twenty seven. Comprehensive report, uh, was submitted to the facilities department and includes specific photos of all areas in question. As well as highlights the areas that are in need and when you need a repair. Um, this, this report can be provided to any of you, um, to give you a little bit more in depth. It's a hundred and sixty-five rooms in total, so if you want to be like, throw up all those pictures from the slide, you can go like. Uh, however, I did put this quick presentation together for town meeting yesterday. Um, so this does give a couple of the locations that we are seeing water in classrooms and hallways. Running down, um, running down the ceilings, right? So, so we do have buckets that are in a school.
The kids talk about them.
Yeah, I mean, when we have a good rainfall, there's quite a few of them. And it's even worse when we get like a rain and windstorm together and there's, there's seams of the roof that they're kind of coming into that. Yeah, and this is just kind of a snapshot of some of the areas that Garland found when they were doing the inspection.
Oh, I like the leaves.
Yeah, vegetation growing on those. So, so these photos that you're seeing are part of the immediate repairs that we're trying to do with that, my, that we proved that.
And then, right, so just leaves as a service, sixty thousand covers the scans.
Covers the scans and major leaves, right, so what we're trying to do is, is attach those major leaves to. That's the hope, the hope, so one of the things that water, water leaks, right, so it's going to find that, we're going to Band-Aid that and we're going to go to the next one. So we do have kind of, um, phased proposals that have come through, which is why we asked for that sum of money so that we could fix the immediate ones that we're seeing now. So we'll develop probably a little bit more and we'll be able to extend out and repair those Band-Aids to, to kind of get them cured. And these are just kind of highlights of what was the, the path as well.
Maybe elders.
Let's see where the moment.
Yeah, it wasn't built, it's newer than Alden, it's over one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was there from twenty six.
Well, so the back has to be at, at least twenty-two years old.
Okay.
The boilers that are in the back are four and twenty-two.
While they're in there.
Oh, the boilers in the pack are twenty-two, so it's twenty-two more.
It has to be at.
Okay.
All right, I was way off.
So that, that covers, um, item number one. Item number two, um, are the Alden intact boilers. Same thing, we're gonna, we're gonna look at a phased approach for that. So the current boilers at Alden will be twenty-two years old as of fiscal year twenty-four. The life expectancy of commercial boiler is fourteen, twelve years. After fifteen years, the efficiency of the boilers drastically declines year over year. There have been eighteen work orders entered for boiler repairs and issues since twenty nineteen. Um, last year alone, we had numerous repairs through the winter and we've also had a boiler repair company back this fall to make um, boiler repairs on all the boilers. Most recently, prior to this meeting today, uh, we did have an issue with the expansion thing in that area as well, so we are seeing a degradation of all the kind of boiler equipment in those rooms. Um, so I recommended replacement of the Alden boilers for fiscal year twenty-four. There's six boilers, um, that service the entire school. Concerns were raised in regards to the cost of the full replacement, um, so we did look at breaking it out in phases. With that approach, I, I would suggest to replace the six boilers for fiscal year twenty-four and then the two remaining boilers that are in the pack for fiscal year twenty-five.
Christina, out of the six boilers, are two completely not functioning at this point?
At the current moment, two are disentangled. We have quotes in to, um, replace the issues that have been identified on those.
Meaning maintenance.
Correct. Trying to get them to a point, again, um, you know, Band-Aid it and help it running so that we can make it through the winter. We have tried to look at, at the ability to do a decent amount of that work in-house, knowing that we're looking to replace these for twenty-four. There are certain components that weren't legally valid, so we're using boilers, but we are trying to kind of spread out the. Labor.
Were these on like a five-year plan?
They were, so these were on Brian Cherry's plan as well.
Was it like a tiered plan? I mean, I'm just looking at a fifteen or twenty-year life expectancy in right here, twenty-two.
They were on a tiered plan, so, so there was a lapse last year, um, both on the town and the school side, the capital requests. Because Brian left in July and I didn't start the home members, so the budget process had already been completed. So there was no, if you looked at it like on the facility side, there was really no concern that it was possible to move here.
So that would have been, we would have started probably the two that are right down, probably would have been addressed and that was this year, so now.
I mean, turf.
Right, like, it's fine. It's, it's implied that there's like an explanation to it, so that's great, thank you.
Yeah, Brian Cherry had an extensive five-year plan. But we didn't have a facilities director to be able to direct anything that was an emergency at that time. And it's a very large number of items that are on the five-year plan, and I think we'll talk about that at the end, just in completing this, this process for the, um, capital, we shared this with our budget subcommittee last week. It's just evident that in the next, the next years, we have significant number of capital requests that we're going to need that are not in line with the typical funding that the town has planned for with capital funding, so it's something we're going to need to look at closely. Um, between major facilities, that's why we are starting to talk about doing a statement of interest this year. To see if we would be eligible for reimbursement from the state through the, um, MSBA to either renovate or, um, actually build a new school in terms of Alden and Chandler School because of the age of the buildings. And so I think from Chris, from the facility standpoint, when Christina starts seeing these major full roof replacement, all boilers and just other general things because of the age of the building with tiles coming up, um, we have a lot of projects that we've had to put on hold just because we can't ask for more than the town has available for capital funding all at once. And so we try to spread it out, um, as much as we can, but it's, it's significant need that we have in our buildings.
But I think Danielle, the other thing that's important for the community to understand is that the, the statement of interest is fantastic, um, but it's a really long process. And so I think that has to be part of the story, the town, the other, like, sort of looking at this in terms of fiscal is what does that mean for, okay, we want, we want to wait for the state dollars to come down. I think we understand that, I think communities understand that the state dollars, it's not a reimbursement, they don't write us a check for whenever Alden was going to cost to rebuild, it's a I learned that it's actually a very small percentage. Um, it was more when we built high school, middle school, it's probably less now, just because of the nature of the program. So I think all of that needs to be shared. My concern is that, or my concern when you see this information is, we're going to invest a lot of money in this because we have to put some Band-Aids on because we're going to wait for the state to make a decision about building a new building. And then we're going to have to build a new building. And we're only going to get reimbursed for thirty, forty percent of that new building. So I understand we have to take all the other things into account and the town has to understand what the other capital projects are. But I think that has to be part of the full story here because it's something that I just sort of became aware of, um. And I think it's hard, when we look at all of these, it feels like we do a lot of putting out fires. Um, and having, and as a result, we put out a fire for that year and then we pushed something that should have been maintained this year to two years, and then we have to put out that fire in two years. So I think I'm, I'm hopeful that we can tell that story pretty clearly, um, and, and maybe have some, the community understand and the town understand.
And just to add, to add to that conversation that we had, there is an MSBA, um, repair expedited process that's not just the whole building renovation process. And so we can apply for that and, but again, those funds don't come through, um, quick, quickly, but it is faster than the, um, full MSBA process for, um, looking at a potential rebuild or renovation. So it's more of an emergency repair application that we can look forward with, that we will definitely explore. Um, but again, to your point, um, there's just, nothing is, nothing will solve all of our problems and there will always need to be a town contribution, whether it's for, um, immediate repairs right now or to, to be able to renovate or to rebuild. Would be a significant cost to the town under the best circumstances. Right.
This information for me, I hope that the community uses this. This information for me, I hope that the communities are ready when we share this information.
Right. I think that's a great reminder because that's. How we got to the co-located middle school, high school. The middle school had had so many repairs and it was just. There were rats falling through the ceiling. I mean, it was absolutely horrific. It was horrifying and there were buckets and there was mold and it was gross. Um, and so it finally got to the point where we can't keep throwing money at this. It's crazy. And I know here too, um yeah, but there's also staff to consider because when it's humid. There are people falling in the halls in Alden because the floors are slippery and the stairwells are slippery. We've had some injuries. Safety's huge. Yeah. So I think that I'm glad you brought that up.
Like it's, you know, it's like.
And that was part of like.
Right.
The pack currently is something that we use that. Is important, but it's nice to have. The six boilers that service all of the classrooms.
And I think that when you're talking about schools and safety, when we're looking at the leaking in the roof situation that we have been moisture, we all know what moisture inside. Buildings causes and we're looking at air quality and I think it's just really important when we have the aerial scan, we'll have a better sense of how much moisture the insulation took in. But um like the the heat and the hot water and the air quality, we don't want to start having mold um in the schools and having any students or staff breathing that in. Right.
So when is the aerial scan um? How fast can that happen, I V? What can you tell us about in terms of our presentations?
Even if I agree, but I know there's a certain number of these that need to pass for the funding that.
The town is, the town is confirming that, um but I believe, but they um they're double checking the days, but they may allow it to.
So I spoke with Garland yesterday, he gave us the proposals for the aerial scans and we can get those done kind of as soon as possible. The um band-aid repairs can start as soon as two weeks. And there's some quotes over four as well.
So. The these are like, you know, sort of like real high priorities, right? Um, so let's say that that's letter A, letter A is real high priorities. Letter B, let's say, is like what we would need to address. Everything. But at the school, like, you know, like. Is B a new school? Is there like, or is there a letter C? Is there, is there, like, when you talk about phases? Is there like a phase that we gave, like, just to keep the lights on and like to keep people safe? These are what we, what you're pointing out, this is what we gotta do. And is there then a number that we can tell that you might decide that you want to tell that says like, look, you know, I. Probably not gonna happen, but like, this is what we would need to like, address everything, the boilers, the roof, the leaks, the plants, the. Right? Is that separate and distinct from a new building? Like, uh, do you do you understand like sort of the basis of the question?
I understand the question, yeah, I mean, I think what you're approaching is what financially would it cost for us to. Address all of those current issues that we have that we're trying to either band-aid or get. That they'll last us another fifteen years or so, and is that number close to if not over? The cost of what a new building costs, right? Right, because you're looking at, especially here, right? You don't have. New humidification, you don't have cooling, so we get into like April, May, June. You have tiles down in one of the wings that start to pop up off the floors. And we tape them down until the kids are gone and then we do a tile project all summer to put all the tiles down.
Yeah.
So that will make it through the next year. So so there's definitely issues that we have. Just due to the age of the school and the fact that we don't have that kind of air quality. That allows us to get to the same point of, yeah, oh, we're a no-hustler.
So if there were a strategy, you'd be prepared to go to the town, little FinCom stuff and say like, look. I mean, in reality, this is really what's needed. You know what I mean? Huge, huge number. This is really what's needed. We're, um, you know, unhappily prioritizing this this sort of stuff and anticipating.
This is not non-negotiable.
Is that what you guys are sort of thinking about, like, what you think about sort of making this project?
What I was trying to, I think, was that I understand why we have to choose priorities and the town will say to us. What do you have, what do we have to address literally to keep the lights on and the doors open? So is, this is what those things are. So, and the caveat is, we're starting this process of. Inquiring with the state what a new building looks like. I think it's very important for us to highlight for the town what that process looks like and what the timeline is. And what the actual money coming from the state max, then whatever we can get. Is gonna be. Um, and I don't know if we go out to Vinon within the school class, I don't, I don't know.
Well, the process, there's a process and I I definitely would recommend if you have any opportunity to attend an MSBA training. As a school committee member, I know that they're offered at times and I'm not sure if they're offering them at the M A M A S C conference. We can look at the um. The sessions that are being offered, but the first step in the process is a statement of interest where we indicate that we have an aging. Building, we have two aging buildings that we would like to be considered for some advice. At that point, if we submit the statement of interest and the state allows us to come up um. To be considered for this project, we would then have to go to town meeting for a feasible feasibility study. And at town meeting, it's about a million dollars, a million plus to conduct a feasibility study. And it wouldn't be until then that we would really know the cost of, we wouldn't know what the recommendation is. It's it's basically a full study where they would, our town has committed that we have invested funds to move forward with the feasibility study because we know we have. A facility that needs to be addressed and they don't want us to say, here's what our recommendation is. They come in and they look at it. Completely with open eyes to say whether or not they would recommend a renovation or a full new build. It could be a renovation. It's a million dollars and that would be voted on at town meeting. At that point, once we were up. For um to be able to be eligible to be the, a school that will be able to break ground. That would be when we, as a school, as a um town, we would be looking at the cost of the project, what the reimbursement rate is at that time, and that would be voted on, whether it's a debt exclusion. Would typically wouldn't be an override, I don't believe, but um at times because this project takes so many years. The cost of building your own school right now might be lower than the cost six years from now with the reimbursement rate. So I think it's important, we we have to start this conversation. I don't think tonight is the night we're going to be able to get through all of that, but I think what we can certainly do is have. Um, training on the MSBA process so that everyone is really clear. It can't just be our budget subcommittee. Everyone needs to be really clear about the MSBA process. In reimbursement so that we can all speak to it and then um we can certainly have community forums and meetings with with FinCom and Select Board, just so people can know. Um exactly what that looks like. But I think what we needed to do with the current budget is really take a look at all the facilities requests right now and all of our capital needs and prioritize. A realistic plan of what is needed right now. We also have a five-year plan where where people will be able to see everything on it that also needs to be addressed that we were, we had to kind of sort through, so that's later on in. The presentation when we get to the end.
Right. I'm sorry.
So I'm actually.
No.
Okay, so I just wanna. Throw it out there, is that. Personally, like from what I've seen, who's for the pack, it would be detrimental for that to get closed down. And I feel like it's just as essential through from the music department, our drama department, I mean, I feel like. Principals can probably talk about it more, but even even Alden uses it for their.
Assemblies, everything.
Graduations.
Those are still, those are still running. Those work, so the pack is, the pack is usable and it it does not appear that it will be um a situation where. We're not gonna need, based on what Christina's recommendations and her conversations with vendors that look at boilers, I don't think that pack is an immediate danger of needing replacement. Although any of the aging boilers could go at any time.
See that, so a commercial boiler likes. And we're fiscal year twenty-four, we're already on two years apart.
So if we're asking, I mean. They can always say no in my opinion.
Okay, so the full quote to replace all of these is not a phase of purchase, four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
I would say ask for it. That's my personal opinion, I'm a one of five, but. That's the replacement for us. That's to replace all eight waters, that's the. And they're, you're already there, like, you're probably gonna.
So I don't think.
They won't all go at once.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I know, I mean.
We would likely, we would likely find a way to repair them.
I feel like we need to be more proactive than bringing up kids, so.
We would either repair them or if we were, if one was, we would. You know, I would go to Lisa and say, oh, we present this to ask for money, so. Similar to what we did with the boost, right? We'd have to go to a special town meeting and say, which is the burden, you burn it, but we have been planned for it. Before they're gone, that needs to be replaced.
What's the harm in asking for it? The money. What's that? What's the harm in asking for it? The town capital is one that. That's right.
That the typical, the typical trend of what is earmarked for one fiscal year is around one million. We are sharing this evening. Several um. So we're looking at our school department capital requests are at nine hundred and twenty-six thousand eight oh nine and our facilities are at nine seventy-seven. And there's only a set amount of capital funding available for the entire town and we have many, many buildings. You can ask Christina how many buildings and facilities we service, so. I think this is, this is the first conversation of many over the next couple of months, so take it all in. And we'll think about it and I think when we come to the end, when we do the official budget hearing in January. We are, the numbers may certainly change from now until then, but these questions are all really, really strong and I think we'll have had a chance at that point to speak to the fiscal advisory. Who oversees um our capital and have finance committee meetings and have select boards. So this is just step one of our budget process where we're kind of presenting the information that we have. And then as a school committee, certainly the numbers that are presented and voted on at the end will certainly change between now and then.
Okay. The last item is bathroom renovations, so this is something that we're across again with Chandler and Alden. Now the the need um is that Chandler, so Chandler. Cafeteria bathrooms, north and south wing are all original to the building, built in nineteen seventy-three. Uh, north and south wing bathrooms had been sold painted approximately twelve years ago. But the walls themselves have not been replaced and they're starting to rust through. The students report that when mopping the bathroom, the rust drops out of the solid bump with the mop. Bathroom is also damaged and there's missing tiles. Through the floor sinking, um so. This one again, so this south bathroom is the worst and that really, again, is is a is a need.
Are those the ones right near the gym?
So to Kristen's point, I think as a community member and you need this process, the question is, how do we get to this point? I mean, when it's, I guess, I wish the community could hear this and I hope they listen. But the question is, how do we get to this point? How do we, how have we let it get to this point where that is happening in a bathroom in an elementary school? And I don't have the answer.
We're sharing a pool of money and some projects are yes and some are no, because the DPW needs something to plow or like we are sharing like Danielle said.
Right, the pool is the pool, so if are we happy with the pool as the pool? If this is what how we have to make choices. Is my, my question to be. In learning about.
Yeah. And those are the questions.
And I think, I think we have to tell these stories better because I sit here and I think if we tell these stories, how can, how do you not? How do you not respond or how do you not think about it in a different way?
And again, from the flip side, I worry that we don't have, because we have, we're putting money, capital. Funding towards these huge projects that are so, how are we maintaining the high school and middle school that are newer? So their priorities aren't gonna be nearly as important, but we don't want to be in the point, so that's, I guess. That's a great question, that's part of the five-year budget process, right? So prior to this meeting, I spent, you know, last like. Three days trying to, trying to look at that holistically, so the middle school, high school opened in twenty-fourteen, so we're starting to get to that ten-year plan and what are the things that we're gonna start to see. Over the next, you know, five to ten years that need to be replaced. So I've started to earmark funds. But to do like those renovations, to have the roofs inspected, to see if there's any like bathrooms, walls, roofs, H box that are gonna start to fail. That we should start to look at replacing and so kind of put like a a little bit of a set aside of money each year. And kind of deal with those as we go, so we don't get to the point. That we're trying to replace whole bathrooms and try to be full of buildings because we're bad and.
That's great, I'm happy to hear it. And that's, yeah, so that's very.
Um, so moving on to our. Pool request back to our school. Um, so, so last year, um Mike Woodford, who was our former CTO, um. Participated in the presentation, um he had worked on a very lengthy, multi-year um. Technology uh capital plan for us. And as a result of that, some of these items are part of that, that um that plan. So this item here, technology, IMAX desktop computers for a total of sixty-five. IMAX for the DHS photography, creative imaging, music tech, photography, creative imaging courses. Um, the range of concurrent lab equipment is now at end of life, the hardware and software applications are no longer supportive and will not run on these older machines that we have. Um, the total amount of that, that item is one hundred and two thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars.
So these are replacement Max.
These are replacing existing devices that we have in classrooms and labs. So if Mike Mike Woodford is no longer, he is no longer here, right, um and we have a new CTO starting on Halloween, okay? Um, and Sharpeino is back with us, um so he does have knowledge of the plan. And he did work with us on um the technology items as well as Cheryl Lewis.
Okay, and so the new person. Now, that is, that is, he's, he's.
That is the systems and network administrator. Maurice Myrie and the the new CTO is um the town, works for the town and the school department and that is who Lisa's talking about.
And so when he comes on board, we'll share all of that information with him and Ed Sharpeino has the institutional knowledge on Mike's plan. And I've assisted with putting this stuff together as well as Cheryl Lewis.
Mac, Mac's a lot of supers. And I understand that this is photography, music and stuff like that, but I mean, similar to what. We did as a district years ago, moving the, you know, all the other computers to um to Chromebooks and sort of PC based. We saved a ton of money in them. And I would just encourage you, you guys are working, these guys are, these particular things, just to. They're probably already thinking about it, but I would encourage like Cheryl Lewis and others to sort of say like, okay, what would it be if we did PCs and used like ability stuff versus Macs and like the. Stuff, because in my limited experience, it is a huge cost difference, it's it's significant. You know, but Macs are weird, like, people are like religiously affiliated. Before John Antonucci, when I first met, he's like, well, I'm a Mac guy, someone was like, oh, we're screwed. He's like, Mac, so we're gonna have to use Macs. Because they're, you know.
We have to have a clear V, that's all. We have to make choices, we'd like a, like, what's the alternative? If, yeah, maybe, maybe the answer is there isn't, and here's why, but I think the town would want to understand, knowing that we switched before. And there's a history there, what? What would this look like? Is there another option?
Right, and I think.
Also think it needs to be very clear the quality of work and whether or not it's gonna affect the kids after like. The subjects that they're using these IMAX for, if. The expectation when they go on the workforce is that they're they're knowledgeable on an IMAX and that's where the. Then that's what they need to use and it's worth. And personally, the, I mean, my oldest had an IMAX, I don't know if my middle guy did, but there's a tremendous difference in usage of the IMAX versus the Chromebook. And I think, yes, it's a lot cheaper and yes, it saved a lot of money and yes, it's probably the right thing to do. I think kids have to try and see those screens, the visibilities, I think there is a cost to what. There is a cost, there was a savings, but there was a cost too, so that thing that also needs to be considered, but I guess that. Taking the IMAX away from the photography and all that, I just want to make sure that we're not limiting the students when they go on the workforce. So just make that part of the story.
Well, why you're right.
Yeah.
Anything? Find in Michael?
Um, honestly, like from an educational standpoint, there's nothing on the Mac that like really drives you to switch into Chromebook. But I do understand, like I did take music tech and I had started to take it, um, daughter do glasses. And I know that like Mac does have so specific software. Like I know like alternatives, like I said, with a lot of one-hundred, I play soft that has like other options. So maybe you can consider other types that are more, more involved, but I think just understand it is the Chromebook.
Uh, next item, um, technology switches, uh, for five hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Um, these are quick replacements, switches in all school buildings have reached the end of life, the age of the current switches. At Alden and Chandler were installed in two, two thousand thirteen and DMS DHS for two thousand fourteen. Um, network switches connect devices that the computers, printers, wireless access points, phones and security cameras. In the network to each other and allow them to talk by exchanging data packets. Switches can be hardware devices that manage physical networks as well as software-based virtual, uh, virtual devices.
What do we do with, didn't we get the switches last time? Isn't that when, when we got the four percent? Wasn't that partly the, the switches?
I don't believe we replaced all of the switches, but we did replace access points.
Okay.
And so some of the access point, the access points were the wifi. And I know we did wifi at the middle school and at the steel complex last year. And as part of that project, it is possible that we replace some switches, but we have switches all over the district. And some switches are, um, much more expensive than others. And so I think that the five hundred and thirteen thousand represents a number of switches of various price points that need replacement at this point.
Yeah, maybe there's a difference between a switch and an access point, but we updated wifi access.
Yes. Yep. And, and Stalia.
And my only question on this is, I think that they're used in the plan, the old plan, and maybe it was, I don't know. Two separate amounts, so three hundred some for FY twenty-four and then a hundred some maybe for FY twenty-five. And it seems like maybe they would just add it together for what we actually would this year. So I wonder if there's an explanation. I'm posing a question that, um, I have to like come up.
We'll check on that.
Um, next item, uh, page one of Chandler playground, one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, Chandler playground, Chandler school has two play structures that are allocated to population, which is over six hundred students. As well as our community on evenings and weekends. The current later playground was rebuilt approximately twenty years ago and has reached its respective lifespan. We have seen a few different repair needs over the last five years. And these replacements are repaired. There have been significant structural elements such as, uh, cracked slides, capping tubar, broken bolts, et cetera. Safety is becoming a concern. Um, in addition to the age of the equipment and design, it's also become outdated. Stated as playground manufacturers have had many developments in the past one year. Playground design and technology have evolved to be safer, ADA compliant, more engaging and more accessible to children. Um, but the next slide. Um, these are some, um, snapshots of the current playgrounds and then proposed playgrounds.
I think we should just note too that this capital funding is just one portion of funds that the Chandler School PTA and, um. Administrators that are working on this project are seeking. They also completed a CPA grant with the town that was submitted. Before the October fifteenth deadline and they are looking to do some significant fundraising efforts. And so this was just one portion of the plan to be able to raise enough funds to be able to, to support this project.
That, that was, we covered that last week.
Yeah. So maybe. Share that.
Item, steel tennis court restoration, um, current status. Um, the state of steals complex tennis courts are substandard and have reached a point where my tennis officials will be unable to improve the courts. Um, as playable for competition. There are numerous large cracks in each of the courts, multiple decelerations, uneven levels. And grass and weeds are growing out of the cracks. There's currently a high risk for a DHS student athlete or Ducksperry residents to sustain and enter into the dangerous surface conditions of the courts. This summer, we engage with Vertex Engineering to evaluate the tennis courts, to understand the current state of the courts. What our options are based on the status of the courts, their recommendations and how best to proceed. Um, here are some images, uh, that show current snapshots of the court from, from the evaluation. Um, I can't read because I am completely terrible vision.
I can read them. So the. Yeah, yeah, we're good. They just are showing the cracks. They're showing the cracks, the puddling.
Okay, I've been over there. Okay, perfect. Uh, this slide shows the rendering of, um, on the left, the first, the larger picture shows a rendering of four sample locations. With total pavement thickness at each location and the images of some of the core samples taken. Uh, the, the core sampling, they took a total of time and samples, um, from like non-playable sections. So that they would be safe to be able to remove them. Um, and on the right-hand side are just some samples of what they, what they, um. What they look like. So you can see that there's some cracking in some of the floors or around the core location. Uh, next slide. So, uh, Vertex provided up with, um, four restoration options. Um, and. Okay, backup. Here we have four restoration options that were provided by Vertex with frozen funds to each. An approximate lifespan of each option and an estimated cost for the option. Um, please note that the cost options referenced here are based on market estimates at the time, um, the report was generated. And we would have to conduct proper procurement through an IFB process, uh, in order to secure firm pricing for the process.
And when was that? So when were the market?
Um, this was provided to us in September.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so not, not terribly long ago. Um, you know, it obviously takes some consideration. We know what's happening in, in the world and, you know. Inflation, positive petroleum, all of that. Um, so the four options are, you know, just doing standard repairs through the tennis courts. Um, which have, have been previously done. We believe that they were done in, um, I believe it was twelve.
Eighteen?
Eighteen or fourteen.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the last evaluation.
So not in a little way?
No. And, um, and they can see from the report, from the court samples, some, that there was some repair done. So the, so the options are tennis court repair. We do the recommended repair, they can be used, um, spring of twenty twenty-three. Um, lifespan of that would be one to two years, a cost of just over forty-eight thousand dollars. Estimated. Um, you can do a tennis court melon overlay, but it adds, add years to the life of the courts. But it may start to track quickly, um, especially where there's already cracks, um, that are located on that courts. Um, but the surface would look like new. Um, so the lifespan would be two plus. Um, the next option would be a bit bit humanist pavement tennis courts. Uh, the court should hold up for, um, at minimum eight to ten years before any significant repair is needed. Um, that obviously has a new surface and the lifespan of that would be, um, approximately twenty years. The box of that is, uh, just over five hundred and seventy-seven thousand estimated. Um, and the, um, the actual recommended is, uh, post-tension concrete tennis courts. Which eliminates deterioration of surface, uh, long life, has minimal repairs. Um, and the lifespan is up to thirty years, very, um, significant cost is, uh, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Pretty broad range of options there. Um.
I think that there's actually five options because we, the turf project was all encompassing, encompassing since our March town meeting. We've been preparing for that, um, as we were in between business administrators and it was challenging. We wanted to make sure that project was completed in its entirety and done well. We knew the tennis court repair was next in line. And so we've been working, while we were having the turf installed, we've been working on this tennis situation. And so we do have a, um, meeting scheduled with tennis players and families next week, just an optional meeting to talk about the evaluation. We could have done a two-hour presentation to you tonight on just tennis courts. And so this is extensive and I think we'll have further conversations about it. But we have engaged with a, um, contractor who is going to do some repairs right now. Because we can't wait and tennis starts in March. And so winter's coming and before it gets any colder, we have someone coming in to do, um, some repairs that will hopefully tide us over. Because none of the choices that we're talking about through capital planning would occur before town meeting in March. So right now we have someone coming in and I, I think he was hoping to start next week to do just some short-term repairs. That we would hopefully be able to get us through FY, FY twenty-three spring tennis season. So that we would be able to host tennis matches here in Ducksperry. Our other options that we have considered would be having, um, our student athletes go to the Kingsbury Club. Where we'd have to rent the facility and we would be dealing with transportation costs. And it's just inconvenient for our student athletes to get from end of the school day to tennis practice. And the cost of that would have been significantly more than the cost that we're trying right now with, with current fiscal year funding to be able to do those repairs. We also cannot use the, um, courts near the library. There aren't enough courts there. And also the yacht club has a more of a clay surface, we've heard. I've never seen the tennis courts at the yacht club. But that also wasn't an option based on approved surfaces for the tennis teams to using. Tarkelm. Those are pickleball.
To clarify. The courts that are transitioned to pickleball can no, you can no longer play tennis on the ball.
Right. No, there's no tennis lines. They took the tennis court lines. So.
I mean, we lost half, we went to with the ladder.
Yeah.
Danielle, my next. Yeah. So the next question is, and this is for clarifying fields and who owns what? The high school tennis courts are the responsibility of the district, i.e. not. The town or CPA recreation dollars or?
So, so we have applied for a CPA grant, um, which we submitted a month ago. We got it in really early. Um, so CPA has our grant request. We had requested from, which is on the next slide. If you look right here, Lisa's gonna go over that.
Okay, sorry. Um, so we submitted for, um, CPA, uh, we submitted CPA application for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Up for a song. We submit, um, the recommendation from the vendor, you can go to that part.
Which was why we starred bit humanist.
Yes. The recommendation from the vendor was the post-temple concrete. Um, and the reason for that is obviously because it is the longest life, the least maintenance and just. You know, just the strongest recommendation from, from them, or districts are going that route. We could not consider, we could not reasonably make that recommendation. Um, but that being said, we wanted to make a recommendation that, that really made the most sense, gave us the most out of what we could do. And so we, we did, we are recommending the bit humanist, um, option. Um, and with that, this is our funding, um, kind of breakdown. So the CPA application was requested two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Um, as part of our capital, um, request, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then, uh, building use revolving fund of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's our fund, yes, from, um, based red host of our states around, around the campus.
If he receives CPA funding, does that mean these courts will be accessible to your rest?
They already are.
That the term, even though there was.
As long as it's not during school hours.
I think that, um, those are open to the community. I know that they're used by the, um, youth programs in town as well. And so I, I do believe that I've seen kids playing games and like ice, um, skating on it. But I think that they are accessible as long as it's not during school time.
So when they, when. When the CPA.
So the fund from CPA wouldn't be available for the CPA summer project.
Town meeting.
Is it possible when you're talking to the tennis team, I feel like it's two hundred, roughly two hundred and ninety thousand dollar difference. I feel like if the tennis. Team and our tennis society, I feel like that can easily be raised to the public.
To get to the post-concrete, to post-tension?
I think it should be explored. We can just, yeah, I mean.
Kristen wants all the boilers and the nicest tennis court. Well, that's why all the choices are, the choices are there. I think when we meet with the tennis families and anyone's welcome to attend that. I think that we want to present to them the report. We did put the full report from the, um, Vertex in engineering, um, core samples. In the school committee folder for this evening, so that you can take a look at that. But I think that we'll, we aren't going, we are making a recommendation here based on budget prioritization because we have to be fiscally responsible. We can't ask for everything. Um, we, but we want to share what the choices are and what we need most, um, quickly in, in terms of.
Because it's not only the tennis team, but it's also anyone who plays tennis in town, especially with all these courts being taken over by pickleball. We can fundraise and two thou, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars is a lot of money. However, it might be.
Yeah, I wonder how many town people play there in summer, because we have a big tennis team. So that's a good question. How many community members?
Yeah.
Good resource.
All right, Lisa, next.
All right, next. So the next slide is the rendering of, just a, a level rendering.
So we have six now, right? That's the.
I think that, um, is it correct that we're repairing five of the courts at this time for use in spring?
We want the immediate repair.
Cause.
And just to be clear, that will make them.
We hope. Yes. That's our, that's our intention. That's our intention to make the courts playable for the spring. Without having to relocate the tennis team and then take on additional costs or not being able to host any, um. Home court, any meet, not meets, matches. Um, and then we'd have to get the kids to practice at, um, an, at an alternate location.
And where did the money come from?
It comes from.
That's not a loaded question. I'm actually curious because I think it's a good way to say, we have. We're covering this because we have to. That's my intention in asking the question, not.
So I think that when we, when we purchase things that are not, we, we, we have district accounts for repairs. I think we don't know what repairs might come up. And so I think we're using current funding for a district repair counts, accounts. But we also could access the facilities use revolving fund, which we hate to do because we really try to utilize that for turf replacement and some of those. Ideally, if we only used our, um, facilities use revolving fund to save up for every ten years when we need a new turf. That would be, that way we wouldn't need to go to capital, but sometimes you do have to go into some of those revolving funds. And then, um, if there's other accounts that we haven't spent as much on other repairs, we would be able to use that. So again, it's not accounted for, but, um, the cost was low enough that we couldn't not act before the winter months started. Because once we waited until the snow started, we'd be up against the first week of spring sports starting. A lot of times it's still snow and ice.
I think I would, my way here, I want the town to understand that the school is making an attempt here to make contributions so that we can use these points.
Right.
And what we're asking for those.
And I just want to point out, I know you're hoping to provide transportation for the tennis players. However, both baseball and hockey, um, can't be provided or transportation to offsites. So I think that should be a consideration that if this is being considered because the tennis for one year might have to move offsite. I don't.
Yep.
I just think it needs to also be considered that. Our boys, baseball team and girls and boys hockey.
We have other teams, yeah, other teams.
Ball goes to Chandler.
Yeah.
They're also like really good enough, like team, team members driving each other. So I don't think that has to be a worry, like transportation.
We can always, yeah, we would have to get creative with that, like the other teams too, but.
Instruments.
Did I skip instruments? Yep.
So, um, this is a continuation of a multi-year implement replacement plan that provides school-owned infrastructure construction. Um, the plan this year is to replace, um, to include purchase of a marophone. Two-button case, concert base, drum with stand, Tuscan bass, baritone sax and euphonium.
Yeah, how many people play the euphonium?
We wanted to know the picture on the left of the euphonium, the one on the bottom is a baritone. You wanted to know, the picture on the left of the euphonium, the one on the bottom is, uh, a baritone.
Very impressive. This is like, uh, I don't have an older kid, so honestly, it all didn't.
I don't think so.
Hey, out of pocket to rent instruments, but in high school, if you play an instrument, that's cool.
There's some unique, there's some unique instruments that you need to have in your bands, and so these typically aren't. These are more unusual, so sometimes kids that play these instruments start off on the saxophone that their family may have purchased, or they may have started off on the trombone. And then when they get to this high school and middle school, they might move to more specialized, Michael might be able to speak to how that.
Well, I know with this, like, sometimes like an extra disadvantage kid, being able to use the one the school has. But also, if you look at this, the euphonium, baritone sax, they're so big that like, you can't just take it to school every day, they have one at school at all, like.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so they have their own at home.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah.
The euphonium and the baritone sax, they just, you can't walk, like, I do with that.
You're not taking the bus with that.
Thank you for explaining, I just didn't understand.
Right, right, there's no room on the bus to take it, they're too big to transport, trade for back and forth, um, so. There are instruments that are used here, laughing. Okay, and then, um, again, uh, just the continuation of our district-wide furniture replacement. Um, replacement of furniture includes desk tables, science lab tools, library reading, area of furniture, flexible feeding options, um. This, uh, we are looking to, uh, replace science lab tables and stools, uh, not references art tools, um, library tables. Um, oh, I said all these things, elementary desk chairs and tables as well, um, some of the images you see here, some of the damage to, um, some of the stuff in the science.
And this is always, this is sort of like a standard, right? Oh, this much furniture.
Yeah, yeah, and so we do about two thousand per floor. Um, and then this, uh, slide into the snapshot of present and upcoming school, uh, department capital needs. Um, so as a district, uh, PA system upgrades, um, athletics and special education ban, uh, for athletics. Metal flow transport cart, um, replacement sales for the sailing team that prefers over at DBMS. Um, to turn out for the technology, uh, student trombone replacements, backup and disaster recovery replacements. Projector replacements, teacher laptop replacements, um, phases two and. Phase two and three on the boiler replacements, um, additional phase on the Chandler playground and also Alden playground. And then, um, the next slide is, uh, snapshot, first of the different facilities items, uh, we adjust grant for perfect, firm replacement. Alden and Chandler bathroom replacements to communal bathrooms, um, the bold section of Alden's elevator, elevator. Which needs major overhaul and Chandler hot water, there are additional items, but.
How come we're replacing a sale at DBMS?
Not CBMS sales, our own sales that we, um, for our, for our team that. That sales powered to be.
We use our own sales.
So this Duxbury, like, all those sales, they know it's like a fall, love, acting, that's what they pay for, and it's great.
Yeah, and the sales are expensive, and so we use our own sales, and there's, um, they do need to be replaced. And in competition, you might know more about sailing than I do, but I think that, um, when the sails start to get. Older, they're not as, um, effective in a race, and so it's important that. That we have, we don't have, we didn't have a system for, um, sail replacement as part of the long-term athletic budget. When, um, Mr. Maidman came in, he brought that to our attention, so, um, that's something that's on our radar screen.
Um, guys, so this says present and upcoming school department capital needs, are any of these present? Because I, I would assume boiler replacement phases two, three, or.
There, there are continuation of that, and then.
But is this going into, are, are these going into our ask for?
No.
None of these?
No.
Okay, so it's.
It's present in that the boilers all need replacing, but we're not asking for all of them in FY twenty-four, so. So we wanted to write place present because some of these things aren't needs in the future, they're needs now, but prioritize are the ones we presented to you.
Yeah.
So I guess saying, it would be great for, for me and for anyone who looks at these, is to understand. To start to explain, what did we push off, these are our priorities, this is what we have to do. What was supposed to happen in FY twenty-four that we're now pushing off, even though we, we need it. But we're prioritizing these things in emergencies, what was supposed to happen based on the plan that got pushed again?
Yep.
So it's just a clear picture.
So we did, the, the CEO was working on a revision to some of the facilities items, and so with that. Um, our five-year plan needed a little bit of modification, and so I just need to make the updates in that, to incorporate those items.
But I think that's a great point, but, yeah, Brian did raise, I mean, to, to his credit, he had a great five-year plan, um, while he was here.
Yep.
He did raise quite a few of these, and, and they weren't put off, this is my.
Don't just do a new five-year plan, you move everything, but make sure it is abundantly clear what we had planned for this year, that we are now delaying. Because of these fires that.
And the plan that I was delivered when I started after.
Right, exactly, and, yeah.
And also maybe it's a little, again, it's like, well, that's a bad, that's what you're saying.
As a plan for twenty twenty. Well, it's sort of what I said, it's how you want to present it, I just don't want it to be like, oh, these are the other things, because like, no, this was supposed to be this year, but we've had to now push it off. Even though it is still considered a priority.
Um, okay, so any?
I had it, I had it.
Capital?
Nope, that's the end of it for tonight.
Okay, thank you, um, so.
Just the beginning.
Couple of, couple of quick things on this day and on this topic for one more hot second. Um, since the next meeting is the budget presentation for us, do you think folks on the, I'm sorry, I'm a subcommittee member, feel like it might be. A good idea to try to have strong representation on the line, maybe for this sort of adverbal, maybe, it would get along better. The reason why I'm asking is, it's such a thing, they have a big point, um, so they can be. They, they can get a lot of themselves together without having to. And I just wonder, would it make sense if I have them to do these next meeting, or a couple of Shannon? Just so they can, uh, sort of, what I mean, spread the word among the members of, you know, our presentation.
I think typ- typically Shannon's been meeting with us, and we typically provide the full presentation binders to. The town and the, um, finance committee, so that they have access to it, so I know they watch our presentation, um, if you, of course, if you want to formally invite them, but that.
Well, no, no, I'm, I'm just saying that, like, this is, um, for lack of a better term, eventually this becomes a selling. Tune for us, we're selling, we're selling the budget, we're advocating, we're advocating through the finance. Um, I know the Shannon's in this, in subcommittee meetings, I think that's great, I just wonder if. It makes sense to start to get a couple of them involved in our school meetings before we present to, I know we give them the binders and stuff. But I don't, I, my own opinion is it can't hurt to start to have them do a little bit of our selling for us. Prior to us giving them like the binders, so.
Yeah, when you just send the chair, uh, email.
Well, I'm asking you guys, what do you think of the idea of, of just inviting some?
You know, we have our subcommittee meetings and the liaison, something, um, that's going actively participating, which is fantastic, we're excited about that, and I think that's where. We can have conversations or question their posts, I think inviting them here is great for viewing purposes, but it's not going to be something.
She's already, so she's already sort of engaged in helping craft.
Yes, and field advisory is also on the radar of permitting anything in that process, so.
That's all right. Okay, good, that's, that's great, uh, I like that. All right, um, so I wanted to, um, thank you, Mrs. Freely, and thanks Christina, who's already.
See it for the whole meeting.
So listen, um, we have three, we actually have four policies to, to talk about, and I'm letting you with time, but one is kind of open about to the meeting. Dr. Will Cox's, um, the, uh. Policy recommendation is time-based, I think time is sort of of the essence, which is why we didn't talk about the first policy subcommittee, that's, um, J F K.
The reason why it's time-based is just due to that TFM, um, audit process, the review that we're going through. And so if we are able to, um, revise this to suggestions of our, um. The member Jesse that we're working with, and if we can provide that, then it helps us in the long run with the process and any changes. Um, that were proposed by the member of that.
So would it make sense to, to do this one first, because it's time-based, and then I wonder, should we make a sort of a call and audible? And, and perhaps defer the other three until next meeting? Because I'm just wondering, there's any, I mean, I could go either way, it's up to you, I mean, it's whatever the, what is the term?
I think the next meeting, so that we serve as the pleasure.
Yeah, what is the pleasure, I mean, should we, should we go over those three tonight, or should we defer them?
At the next meeting, we want to have a budget presentation, but we will not have, so we will.
We really try to keep the, um, budget present, the budget presentation evening as a light agenda. And so it would really only be that plus potentially the, um, policy discussions.
That would be my.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll defer to CRD JLC page. And we'll do JK, I feel like this assessment should be written.
And JF.
And so that was page, uh, that's the last page, that's page ninety-five. So, um, may I have a, um.
Ninety-five.
May I have a motion to approve the revisions to policy J F K?
J K F.
J K F, please.
So moved, that's it.
Okay, take it away.
Sure, so the, um, information that we wanted to amend is striking the portion that says, until the team develops. And the parent guardian consent to new IEP, so looking at the entire context of it. Um, this is in reference to if there is a behavior, and the behavior was related to the student's disability. We are stating that the student may not be excluded from the current educational place. With the exception of the case of weapons, drugs, or seriously bodily, bodily injury. Um, our current policy then has an additional line that says, until the team develops and the parent guardians consent to a new IEP. So we are taking that out and just stating that, um, that team. If the team determines behavior was related to the disability, the student may not be excluded from the current educational place. So this is reflective of more inclusive, um, the inclusive language and not, um, waiting until. A team develops or consents to a new IEP, so.
And this was the recommendation of.
Correct.
Then the serious bodily injury is to themselves or others, yes.
Um. The name of the, uh, the name of policies, discipline students with special needs, did you change the term special needs last year when we went over the handbooks? For, um, I thought I remembered when the principals did the new handbooks at the end of last year, there were things that.
I do not remember that.
No, okay, so forget it, okay, okay, I might be. I don't have any questions given.
It's a dream, I have no question.
Okay, I'm ready to vote?
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five nothing, great, glide pass. All right, so we're gonna defer the other ones, um, so it's the, um, uh, second public comment. Did, would anyone like to make second public comment? That's great, okay, so, um, can I just do it again? Oh, right, I'm starting, oh, jeez.
Oh, my goodness.
And for future agendas.
Does anyone? Probably not, but if, if that's the case, I'm sorry to, uh, excuse me, now in the next meeting. Um, does anyone have any considerations for future agendas?
Well, I guess when are we going to put on the discussion on the presentation?
Oh, good question, um.
That's why I'm here.
That's not why you're here. So, um, when, uh, probably not a next meeting. What, what, what do we have for that's the MCAS results and budget discussion? I would have, I mean, my phone would be a little quick somewhere, um, but I'm happy to.
Budget discussion is usually quick, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. A little delayed here. I mean, budget discussion is just sort of, we go over it again, because Danielle's already done her presentation, that's not usually that long.
Mm-hmm.
MCAS results, think that'll be long, no?
I think we should put it there.
Think so, yeah.
It technically is.
Probably like twenty minutes, twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of fresh, you don't want.
Have to ask you about MCAS. Too. Oh, did you tell me you had to ask me something?
Yeah, yeah.
You texted me.
Yeah, we can ask.
Well, and I think my, my hope is that again, it's important that it goes on the budget for the public to see, and so that we can. Engage the public, in the public on that, on that topic, it's on the, right, and we can do that.
Okay.
Can you invite?
Yeah.
November sixteen, okay.
It's like their opinion, and if they can find every huge material, so they could actively engage in the conversation.
It might be Lieutenant Chubb that would want to speak to it as well, but I think absolutely we could invite DPD to participate.
What would you guys say about inviting one only, but I mean, do we, I?
I mean, she's. Yeah, and then she, yeah. We're seeking additional information.
We should ask Lieutenant Chubb what his pressure is. More the voice of the.
Okay, all right, I think.
As opposed to them.
Okay, great, um, any other considerations, future agendas?
Well, you know.
Not yet.
Can we, no.
It's like, what is she gonna say?
So we're not doing public comment, I don't think, okay, so, can I have motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All over the table? Thank you.
Hope I need to, I need to turn the meeting off.